We're reconvening. I did not have executive session.
We didn't go into executive session.
We didn't go into executive session. And so I would need to verify quorum, and I see four people, and we have one more coming, but we can go ahead. Let's go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a little message to read here. It won't take too long, better put my glasses on. So I just want, good evening, everyone. Welcome back after the intervening Christmas and New Year's time off. Just wanted to fill you in on some of the recent board activities. We're all working together to meet our goals, make NIC flourish again as a goal, and resolve the NWCCU accreditation issues. I met with President Swain, Steve Kurtz, our accreditation liaison officer, who's over here, and the ACCT consultants to drill down into the specific expectations of the NWCCU accreditation team. We discussed what needs to be done and have been working on those items in preparation because the next meeting with NWCCU is, what, a week from Friday? A week from Friday over in the Seattle area.
February 2nd.
I also met with the same group earlier this week to discuss ways to increase communication between the administration and the board, plus more clearly defined roles. We are making progress there, too. We've also been working legal issues with the intent of resolving a number of them, and are making some progress. In addition, as you see in the board package, the policy subcommittee has prepared a civility resolution for consideration by the board. We have completed the adoption of the changes to the previous policies. And the reason I quote that specifically is because we were getting feedback that NWCCU did not understand that we had completed the required policy changes and the board had adopted them. We all need to remember that one of the top concerns of NWCCU is the Board of Trustees' reviews, and I'm quoting from their report. "The Board of Trustees' reviews affirms and adheres to institutional and board policies, particularly those pertaining to appropriate roles and responsibilities, expectations, professional contacts, conduct, and ethics, and grievance procedures." This means that we need to keep the rules up to date, follow them, communicate with each other, and resolve role issues where we need to. I believe we are making some progress, and although there is more to be done, we are working towards our goals on a continuous basis. Also, just want to make a note to those of you in the constituency groups that a number of the concerns we're working on are not only in NWCCU accreditation, but they're also constituent group issues. So we are working on those on almost a daily basis. And that's all I've got for my little speech here. So, next, we go to public comment. So Mike Gridley.
Thank you for allowing public comment. You know, I opened up my notebook tonight thinking about what I was going to say, and for some, I don't even remember how it got there, but there was a sentence at the top that said, "People helping people." And that was it, on a blank sheet of paper. I'm like, all right, somebody's trying to tell me what to say here. So I just want to say, I feel like I'm here, I think most people here in attendance, and this board are all people trying to help people. Now specifically, as you know, on November 29th, we mediated. It wasn't a whole lot of fun, but we mediated my lawsuit, agreed to a settlement agreement, and there were terms that we were all supposed to comply with. And I guess my comment would be, I'd like to see some more progress on completion of those terms. And I won't go into any other further detail, but that's my concern. And, you know, just want to know, if we don't have a deal, okay, but I think we have a deal, and I think it's part of the general good of moving forward, moving this university forward. Driving here, every time, I'm like, wow, what a facility, what a staff, what a faculty, and then the students who are helping the community every day. So again, thank you for your time, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Karen Schepler.
So President Swain won another lawsuit. That's by my count, 2-0. I was really disappointed to hear that there was obstruction again for him doing his job because he is the president of this organization. So I would ask the board to consider, instead of necessarily listening to the legal advice, is to maybe get a mediator before we have to go and have another lawsuit. Maybe that'll save the university some money because I don't see the people on the board changing yet because that's November. So I would encourage you to look at some alternate solutions to work with your president and support him in his job. Secondly, on the presidency, I didn't see anything on removing Dr. South from the payroll. And since the board opted to cure the issues from the December meeting with the open meeting laws, you invalidated everything that came after that, including his hiring and contract. So I would ask the board again to remove Dr. South from payroll, or resolve that however you need to do it. But we haven't heard anything back on what your guys' plans are to make that happen, and since you're going to the NWCCU on the second, it would be good to have a plan on getting that resolved and having one president on the payroll. Thank you.
Ed De Priest.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity here. It's one thing to try and impose your values and claim that you are doing the will of those who elected you. And it's understandable that you're trying to impose your values on those who don't share your values, all while claiming that you are doing what those elected you want you to do. The problem, as has been demonstrated numerous times now, is that you don't have the right to flaunt statutes, codes, policies, and other people's rights in trying to force your agenda and values down people's throats. How many times now has the court found against what you're trying to do? How many times has the court had to order you to recognize the rights of others? But I know the court is part of the global authoritarian cabal and woke liberal Marxist rhinos trying to indoctrinate the people of North Idaho. How much taxpayer money have you fiscally conservative-rated and vetted trustees spent trying to force your values down people's throats? In this latest issue, Dr. Swain's report, is Dr. Swain's report going to be made available to the taxpayer after all taxpayers paying for it? It makes one wonder why, if it supports your position, that you wouldn't make it available. Something tells me that if it did, you'd be rushing to make it public. My guess is that it demonstrates that the allegations against Dr. Swain are or were unfounded. If I'm wrong, then the commensurate actions should be taken, but something tells me that's not the case. My guess is that you really just want to pay off this employee and then claim Dr. Swain caused the payout, and then try and terminate Dr. Swain again so that you can bring back your guy who is having a hundreds of thousands of dollars taxpayer-paid vacation, who you feel will give you control of operations and access to staff, faculty, and administration and the like, so that you can then purge those who you don't feel march lockstep to your values. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Schepler.
My name is Robert Schepler, and I'd like to speak about the accreditation issues the college is currently facing. We've been battling this for over two years now, and the NWCCU sent out their letter nearly a year ago with a list of things the college had to do to stay accredited. In November, they published another letter, and the results of that letter were basically the college and the professional staff were doing an awesome job keeping the school functioning and going despite the challenges that the Board of Trustees is presenting, and that the Board of Trustees itself is at fault for the risk in the accreditation issues. It's amazing they sent out a list that came out last spring, and the number of items that still are not addressed in that letter. And Mr. Wagner, no disrespect intended, but you keep talking about the progress being made, and I don't think you know what that word means. It really is confusing to hear progress constantly, but if you continually repeat the word and you don't mean it, then it loses its value. The only people I see benefiting from this current uptick in turmoil with the college is, in fact, the people being paid, and that would be Dr. South, who has an illegal contract. It would be Art McComber, who is still being paid for, I don't know why. Mr. Boils, who is neither qualified nor should be sitting at that position.
Mr. Chair, personal attacks.
Mr. Banducci, let's talk about you for just a moment.
Sir.
Nope.
Mr. Chair.
This is the accreditation. The accreditation, last time, this is something we should be addressing, and yet, at the last meeting, Mr. Banducci said we'd need to be throwing parties for his political friends before, in the legislature. And that's not addressing accreditation either.
They weren't on point with me at all.
William Elliott.
Public comment should not allow people to make personal attacks on anybody at this dais or any of our constituent leaders. That's inappropriate. If people start making personal attacks on any one individual, whoever the trustee, the president, whatever, that person's mic should be cut off. That's not appropriate.
We were working on that when the time expired.
I don't think you're going to find this offensive. I'm going to talk to you about a statue to Chief Morris Antelope and his current location. It's currently located here on Rosenberry Drive, right after the circle of College and River. It's hidden behind a guardrail. It's got foliage around it. I know when it was originally dedicated, when Steve Woodmer was mayor here back in 2016, it was dedicated on the river. There was a little man-made peninsula that was built out there. And my understanding, I may have my facts wrong here, but my understanding was there were some concerns about that sinking or some erosion, and they needed to be relocated. It's hidden, and it's a shame because it's a beautiful piece of art, and it's commemorating an important leader in the history of our area here, a man who led the indigenous people here locally, and he was known for being fair and being just, and this just is not, it's just not placed right. So I'm just, I'm really here just to say, you've done a great job of honoring the indigenous people with names on buildings, with signage, and with the gardens, and this is a wonderful piece of art that if we found a better location for it, I think would really serve the community well, and it would be the right thing to do to recognize, again, in honor of the people who were the first people here. So that's what I'm here to suggest. Let's find a better location for it.
Mr. Chair. I was there also at the dedication. You're right, that was a great location. I don't recall what the problem was with that, but I'm sure we'll see what you can do. Because that is a nice piece of art, and an important one.
Yeah, it was a great location because of looking over the river, and I'm sure it was moved for the right reason, that there may have been some sinkages, and I've just been told that by folks, but I'll.
Yeah, we need to talk about that later. Maybe you could talk it through us later.
Mr. Chair. Chair Wagner.
Chair McKenzie, I mean, trustee McKenzie.
Well, I do have my board chair tag on, so I haven't got. Would the president just, as he responds to maybe public commenters, just kind of give either the board an update, either through email, however you want, but just.
I'll find out the facts.
Don't have to agree to whatever the outcome is, but just whatever the response is.
We'll find out the facts and address it at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Suzie, can you put that on the to-do list? Thank you.
Drew Berube, am I pronouncing it correctly? Sorry, can you say it so I can memorize it?
Thank you. It's Jamie Berubi.
Jamie, okay.
I wanted to discuss the civility resolution, and I read through that, and everything in here, the board has three, members of the board have not displayed any of these actions about listening, about respecting different opinions, and showing courtesy, and avoiding rhetoric, and refrain from making slanderous, profane, and personal remarks intended to humiliate and intimidate and malign others. Also, not speaking truthfully. And you don't debate policy, you tag people, and especially one member of this board. So I have some concerns about this policy because I don't think the three of you can even do that. I also read in here where it says, "We commit ourselves to build a civil, political community in which each person is respected, and spirited public and political debate is aimed at the betterment of North Idaho College and the Idaho Panhandle." Now, forgive me, I may be really ignorant here, but I thought these positions here were nonpartisan. And so why is this statement about politics even in here? You know, I'd like the answer to that question, and I would like to know who and how this will be enforced. And I challenge you, Mike Wagner, to put some order in this board and stop this foolishness. Because it's, I heard there was some attacks made even before the meeting tonight by one individual, and it's not appropriate. It's like, you guys have the power to make those, do all these bad things, but then you expect the public to worship you. It doesn't work that way. And then, as far as the, smile at me, Todd.
Yeah, I've felt a lot of respect over the last 11 years. It's a joke. Sorry, I have to laugh when you say stupid things.
Let's move on here. She's got the floor.
Perfect example, perfect example of your behavior.
Just call it the truth.
Thank you.
No, you're not speaking truth.
Dave Riley.
Would idiotic have been a better word?
Boy, you're not a fool tonight, are you?
Pretty much. Having a lot of respect for some of you.
Todd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, Board of Trustees. About nine months ago, I came before you, shortly after our state superintendent of education, Debbie Critchfield, released a memo basically encouraging our facilities here in Idaho to not include any kinds of diversity statements in hiring at the higher levels of education. Since that time, there was a Supreme Court decision basically ruling that affirmative action was, in fact, unconstitutional. And I brought up the fact that policy 3.02.01 includes affirmative action, which is illegal in Idaho and has been since 2020. I think, if I'm not mistaken, having our policies here at North Idaho College in line with state law is one of the requirements for NWCCU accreditation, and to my knowledge, this issue of policy 3.02.01 hasn't been addressed yet, and so I was kind of curious if the progress is being made on that as opposed to progressive ideology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question. What's his name?
Dave Riley.
Come on. From nine months, I think the board requested a response to your input, a public comment. You're saying you have not received a response to that.
I have received no response, and I did send a follow-up email, I believe, to President Swain several months after the fact.
So it's not appropriate for me to respond directly to the public on those things? What my response is, has been to refer that to the Senate for review, and we've done that. So they're in the process of reviewing that policy and making recommendations, and we'll get that back.
Thank you.
Donna Burge or Runge?
You haven't lived here long enough, have you? Runge.
Runge.
Donna Runge is my name.
Okay. Thank you.
I feel like I represent a lot of the people that have lived here. I've lived here for 81 years, and I worked at North Idaho College for 15 years. I was a counselor, and we worked so hard to have student success. We were really a family, and the staff, the faculty got along so well, and the faculty and the administration ran the college. I feel it's a travesty that you, three men, think you can run the college, and that just makes everybody very upset within our community. One thing that's very hard on our community is that you're wasting, wasting, wasting our money. And it never ends. It never ends. And Banducci, I knew your mother really, really well.
We had a lot of your furniture.
She was a lovely lady. I also feel that you spend so much money that we could use on student success. That's when I worked here, it was totally student success. And then you hire someone for so much money that is unnecessary when we have such professional people that you could hire. And I just want to say that you have not been a hit, you three, with the students, with the faculty or the staff, and you are not a hit with the community, not at all. And we're very disappointed because this is our jewel. This is our gem. It's always been, and hopefully always will. So please change your mindset.
That completes public comment. Next, we have celebrating success. Can we go ahead and do that?
Do you want me to introduce them? Can we introduce them, or I just talk to them?
All right. Tonight, we were going to have Casey Wilhelm and Ted Tedman here tonight to present a little bit on what they presented in October in Las Vegas. Unfortunately, Professor Wilhelm got sick today and had to go home early, so Professor Tedman is going to do a solo presentation. A little bit of quick background. Mr. Wilhelm and Mr. Tedman presented in 2019 in San Francisco, and it was a critical success. In fact, at the reception that night, that was the topic of conversation. Trustee Brad Murray came to them and said it was the best presentation that he had heard of the entire conference. Leader Byrne sat in the second row and looked like a proud mom, and she rushed up on the stage to give us hugs at the end and tell us how great we did. Even Dr. McLennan was pretty excited and applause, and was pretty proud of the group. And it's a big deal. Unfortunately, an individual at the last board meeting had a lot of negative spin, and I'll address a little bit of that at the end here. I don't want to say too much before Ted presents, but suffice it to say that the national conference, ACCT conference, is a very important conference, and it's highly encouraged for trustees around the nation to attend, and there's several, there's thousands that come to these conferences. It's a pretty big deal, and to present is a pretty big deal. And so I just want to help you to understand the magnitude of being selected. It's quite a process that you have to submit and go through, and then they determine, and then select only so many of the potential presenters. So it's an honor to be selected, and to be selected a second time shows how successful the first presentation was, because this was a follow-on to that. So without further ado, let me turn it over to Professor Tedman at this time.
Thanks very much, Chairman Wagner, trustees, Mr. President, boss. Great to see you. I'm a faculty member here at NIC. See some of my students here in the room. Really an honor to be here, but really, Casey, he sends his deepest apologies for not being able to be here. He honestly would if he was physically able to stand, but he, too, wants to give his thanks to the board for their continued support. All this started about 2012, when Casey and I saw that the way we're teaching students just wasn't working, especially our technology students. The way we were having them do it from a textbook was just not the way to do it. We came up with a new idea. We sold it to McGraw-Hill. They sent us to Denmark to learn the coding, and in January there, they published our first book, Investigating Technology. That, I guess it was that fall, September, Casey and I were at an establishment run by Trustee Banducci's son. He introduced us to his dad, and ever since there, when he heard about our research, about how students learn, about how to engage them in computers, he became our biggest advocate. And so Casey and I have always been grateful for Trustee Banducci, for his continued support. He then brought us to the attention of Trustee Emeritus, then the board chair, Judy Meyer, who had us do one of these presentations, celebrating success. We brought up one of our students. She demonstrated how, using our techniques, she was much, she was a returning student, a little older. It made all the difference for her in being able to learn from, and learn how to operate computers. And it just went on from there. We were product of the year. Board Chair Kristi Wood heard about us being product of the year for McGraw-Hill, and that's, she nominated me, for some reason, not Casey, as instructor of the year for the Associated Community College Trustees. So it was a huge, very humbling moment. With that, we got to present at the October 2019 that Trustee Banducci just spoke of, and it was overwhelming. Standing room only, a room this big, everyone standing up, people outside, right there, with a gentleman with a beard, like, everyone was out there leaning in, listening to our presentation. It was really, really good.
Sitting on the floor. Remember, we had people come in and sit on the floor.
Oh, yeah. There wasn't even room in the aisles. It was, it was great, and because of that, we had, Casey and I were in it, brought to dozens, dozens. We presented many, many, many times around the country. In fact, just following February, they had us fly out to DC to give, make a couple of podcasts for the ACCT. From then, McGraw-Hill hired us to do another book, Investigating MIS. That was awarded product of the year, and our first book's in second edition now. And then we were also invited by the ACCT to come and present again this last October. It was a great time. I got to see some old friends. Rick McLennan was out there. Talked to him for a long time. He was very curious to see how the college is doing, how we're doing. He sends his best. I guess more than anything, I don't know how to say this, except that I get it that we don't always get along. Casey and I, we're co-authors, we work together, we don't always get along, but when you put students first, you can really do amazing things. So, thank you very much. I was going to talk about our presentation and give some notes on our research, but I have a side bet with Steve that I'd be off quick.
Would you like to talk about how you've provided the book for the students?
Yes, sir. When we first mentioned this to Trustee Banducci back at the Bulldog, back at his son's establishment, we let him know that for our students, our product is always free. I'm into banking, well, as you know, Trustee Corkle. Just to give you an idea, we have, at the time, we had 250 students a year taking the class. Is that right, Colleen? We had a bunch of students taking Intro to Computers. It's since dropped down. We got about 100 a year now, but that's, what, 10 years? When we went into it, the book was costing students $130. We gave them our book for free, so 130, roughly 175 students a year times 10 years, that's over 200 grand. We've saved your students alone just from that. And our research has brought down, brought forth so much additional information, sorry, Steve. For example, whenever Casey and I, food insecurity, things that you would never think of, our research has shown is a big issue for many of our students. So Casey and I always have food, snacks in the back of the classroom, donuts, coffee, make it. Make it, we also keep our students in groups and clusters. Our research shows that Gen Z students in particular need this socialization. Online classes are terrible for them, according to our research. Highly anxious, so we always have music playing. They're good at these. They're wonderful at these. They can do this forever. But with file management, with keyboarding skills, there's big knowledge gaps. These are things we need to address. The students need this kind of research and this kind of work. Thank you for your continued support.
Let's try to think if there's anything else to add to that. You did, you got the podcasts up on the slide. So you were invited after 2019 to do the podcasts. Oh, I know one thing I want to mention that you didn't mention. When we got done with the presentation in 2023, Laird Stone, Chair of the Board for College of Southern Idaho, approached Ted and Casey and I and asked Ted and Casey if they would come and make their presentation to CSI. Laird thought it was an outstanding presentation and we have great respect for Laird and thought that it would be worthwhile to have that down at CSI. And quite frankly, I can't see why that shouldn't be at all four of the community colleges, including our own, to take advantage of the work that Ted and Casey have done. So that'd be one of my proposals is they present to their fellow faculty here. I think it'd be of value. But I know we're still, we're trying to work out getting them down to CSI to present down there to those folks. Thank you, Ted. Couple of other thoughts, if I may. We take a lot of hits up here and there's a lot of screaming about financial stuff. I'm going to speak to that for a moment because I listened to two minutes of it at the last public comment. And I listened to some more of it here. When President, interim President Sabaly was hired, the bar was reset back down to a hundred and eighty.
Hold on. No, let's handle this later.
Then the numbers were dropped down for the president and the staff. And then they were put back up again. And that's where we end up being at. But here's the other deal. When we do these conferences, which are highly viewed by NWCCU, highly encouraged by ACCT, and then for us to be criticized for spending there every year, I know myself, I've only gone every other year, I've only been five times in eleven years, and I've only done the West Coast. We do the early bird pricing so we get the lower rates for the registration and for the hotels. Sometimes there's East Coast. I know like Trustee Wood went to New York for one of these. But you also understand, as they're talking to us trustees, President Swain was at the same meeting. In fact, he was in the same pre-congress training as I was, being led by Ken Burke, our ACCT trainer, and being supported by Debbie DeThomas. So our two trainers that we're paying right here at NIC were the ones that were training in the session that Nick and I were in together. The other two trustees were in board chair training, which was good for Greg to get the training and good for Mike, as it turned out, he was, became board chair. So we're down there getting training and we're interacting and we're getting good ideas and we're sharing ideas as, as Ted and Casey are sharing ideas and other colleges are taking those to implement them, we're doing the same thing and we're bringing good ideas back. So to have somebody up here criticizing the fact that we would go to these professional meetings held by ACCT that we're encouraged to go to by ACCT, that our own ACCT trainers are there training, that doesn't make any sense. It's rather short sighted. And again, to attack some trustees, but then not even to mention, hey, the president was there with us too, the whole time doing the same training. So get more of the information and don't believe some of the stuff that's being told because there's more to the story. If you have a question, ask and we'll try to get you the information. And the other thing that's never been mentioned and trustees didn't even realize it, it wasn't until Debbie DeThomas told Greg, one of our students got an award down there from National Honor Society. We didn't even know about it. I wasn't even there when he got the award because I wasn't aware of it. So that's another reason why we should have been down there with supporting him, getting his award from the National Honor Society. Greg was in there because Debbie had told him and he was able to make it. And I don't know if, if Nick finally got in there or not, but. So there's a lot going on at those meetings and to have one of our students nationally recognized was kind of a big deal too. So that's all I've got.
Okay. I had planned to do this beforehand, but also one other statement I'd like to make. We have communicated with Dr. South and confirmed with him that his contract will, will end on June thirtieth and will not be renewed. So that is one of the major things. It took a lot of work and we got that all squared away. Okay? So let's go ahead to the constituent reports. ASNC is first, come on up. Michael Haberman.
Thank you Chair Wagner, Dr. Swain, members of the community and the board. So ASNC's met three times since the beginning of the semester discussing project ideas. We're wrapping a lot of our fall projects up, some of which include, we're going to do a suggestion box down at the Get Involved booth so that students could more openly reach out to us, just in case someone might be like, oh, well, we'd like to see, for instance, more benches on campus or we'd like to see this in the Student Union Building. So that, that's been a really good project. The president's wall, we put in a facilities request form, so that shouldn't be too much longer, but it should just be right out there as soon as it's up. So you could view all the past ASNC presidents and I'm happy to be on that wall soon. We have set up preliminary budget for the upcoming team and we'll meet later on, once we have a little bit more of the enrollment data. But for right now, we sent basically a skeleton budget down to Steve. And yeah, so that should guide next year's team. So yesterday during our meeting, we had an agenda item, which was talking about the vote of no confidence. And the students voted unanimously for me to draft up a statement and make one. So lastly, we've been discussing the vote of no confidence and would like to say that you guys have made some improvements between last month's statement on President Swain, how you want to keep him as our permanent president. The active commitment to accreditation, the respect that the board chair has shown to the president. Our vote of no confidence has not been nullified, but we request the board, and this was made before the board meeting, acknowledges the students' response. As it appears, you guys seem to agree to our terms. But there is one last thing I'd like to say. When board members are up here, you guys set the standard for how people treat you and how you treat people. And I understand that some board members may have been treated unfairly in the past. But I would ask the board refrain from using terms to college employees like idiotic. I understand you guys catch a lot of flack and I understand that you may have some disagreements. But it is heartbreaking as a student to see that. And personally, I think Chair Wagner, he sets a really high standard. And if you, if everyone follows that standard, I could see the board improving a lot. So do you guys have any questions or comments for me?
Do you remember the number, the size of your budget? Just roughly what?
I don't remember the top, off of the top of my head now. We did make budget cuts just in case enrollment falls, but from what it looks like, I'm seeing some positive numbers, so. All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Faculty Assembly, Kathleen.
Good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain, community members, my incomparable NIC faculty and staff colleagues, and our unrivaled students. A belated Happy New Year to you all. At the first faculty meeting of this year, on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, Faculty Assembly addressed the following items of business. Standing reports and updates from Senate, SLOA, which is the Student Learning Outcomes and Assessment Committee, adjunct faculty, and advising were heard. Then Steve Knott, our newest faculty librarian, announced that Molestead Library is now again able to conduct course training and give talks to classes about informational literacy and library use. There was a gap in being able to do that because we didn't have any faculty librarians. So it's a huge relief to many courses, especially English one oh one and our first-year experience classes, to have that again available in our Molestead Library. In my chair report, I gave a brief overview of the new Idaho Launch Program to the faculty, which will provide eighty percent or up to eight thousand dollars per eligible student to attend training or college over the first two years, along with the news of how well the first rollout is going. It's far exceeded what the state was anticipating. This state-supported program will be a game changer for high school seniors across our state who want to attend college or vocational training. And we're hoping that NIC sees the tangible benefit of the program in terms of summer and fall enrollment numbers. I also updated the faculty on the timeline for the upcoming NWCCU Commission meeting on February second, as well as the projected timeline for further NWCCU site visits and subsequent report letter due dates for NIC. The whole college anxiously awaits the most current status decision from NWCCU. In this meeting, we had no old business, so we moved on to new business. This was wonderful, similar to what you do here at the board meetings. We do a faculty celebrations at each one of the Faculty Assembly meetings. And this presentation was our very own English Division Chair Molly Mashad, talking about her Woku or World Cultures two oh seven Irish murder mysteries course and international tours. Molly has used this course structure now to explore England in two different years and now will be in her second year this year, exploring the literature and culture of Ireland. The three-week visit to the Emerald Isle after the main semester course wraps up in May, the group finishes the course by traveling the entire circumference of Ireland, stopping at ten cities, taking tours and visiting the sites of the books studied in the class. Just a plug for future courses, Molly welcomes community members, faculty and staff in this class, and relishes the chance to offer this unparalleled experience to our campus and to our community. It was a wonderful presentation. And on a side note, I got to meet the group. My husband and I were in Killarney at the same time, so we met at Murphy's Pub and raised, raised a glass to NIC from Ireland. Then we asked, had asked Thomas Scott and Patty Hope from our IT department to come and talk to the faculty about the Canvas Turnitin integration that was accomplished over the winter break. There were some issues with that integration and we were concerned that it was going to impact classes in the first weeks of the semester. So they came and answered the questions from the faculty and were able to get the integration issue solved with, with Canvas and Turnitin. But it was a good opportunity to have some dialogue between IT and faculty. The last thing for us is a discussion of the change to common course times for fall of 2024. That was reviewed with faculty and questions about the rationale and the rollout of this new, more streamlined timetable for classes was discussed. I will return to faculty in February with more information based on their questions, but it looks like it's going to be a really efficient use of class time that will start for us in fall of 2024. Then after various announcements for good of the order, the first meeting of 2024 was adjourned. With that, I am open for questions.
You took, you took how long to go around Ireland?
Well, I, I was not with the class, but there were a number of faculty members that, that did go, including our own Dr. Duman here. They do the class throughout the semester, studying the different Irish mysteries because it is an English World Cultures class. And then they leave shortly after graduation and spend three weeks literally going around the entire outside of Ireland, looking at the places that were featured in the books that they, that they studied. And the students have an opportunity to, to lead the tour of a certain city and show folks where the, the cultural events are and the historical places and the food and the music and the literature of that, of that era. So the class, the class is English literature. It is literally world cultures. It's how to travel. Molly has had a number of students in the times that she's done these classes that have never been on an airplane. And so to, to go through the process of getting your passport and flying from here to Ireland or England and then spending three weeks immersing yourself in that culture is an opportunity that students will never, ever forget. And I would, I would probably say many of the, of the faculty and staff and community members that have gone along have found that to be a life-changing.
She also makes them do a ten-mile hike before they go. And if they can't do the ten-mile hike, they can't go because they do ten miles a day.
They do have ten miles of walking every day. And so one of, one of the things she makes them pack their suitcase, they can only take a carry-on there. They can take as many luggage as they want to coming back so they can get all of the, all of the souvenirs that they want. But they can take a carry-on, but she literally has them leave the college rolling their carry-on and they go all the way downtown around McEwen Park and then coming back to the college to see if they can, if they can, you know, cut the mustard with their suitcase.
Sounds very wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Staff Assembly. Matt.
Matt and his crew have been busy for the past ten days. They, they keep the streets clean, the sidewalks clean, the parking lots clean, salt on the entranceways and with all the snow and freezing rain, it's been a challenging ten days. So I just want to recognize you and your crew for, for getting all that done.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been quite a fun last few weeks. I also got, just on that note, landscaping helps us a ton with that. And then also, actually all facilities does, we have custodial at night, clearing out if it snows then. So it's quite a big team effort. So good evening, Chair Wagner, trustees and President Swain. On Thursday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, Staff Assembly met and addressed the following item. We had a second reading on the recommended changes to the Staff Assembly Constitution, followed by discussion and then was voted upon. The changes were approved. There were sixty-eight members present and forty-seven voted in favor and zero voted against. I don't have a really cool story like Ireland, but that kind of clues my door.
But you got some clean streets and clean sidewalks.
We do, we do. Yep. And a boiler that's functioning now.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's even better.
Oh, good, yeah.
I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senate. Matt.
Chair Wagner, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, community members, the Senate met last Thursday and, oh, sorry. Senate met last Thursday. Only item of business was to conduct first reads on two procedures and one policy. Procedure or policy seven dot oh one dot oh four, professional service contracts, procedure three dot oh four dot oh one sick leave and procedure three dot oh two dot oh nine tenure. With that, I stand for questions.
Would it be appropriate to have a guest in it, maybe not today on the spot, but at the next meeting of when you anticipate that policy that was referred to? I'm sure it's in the line.
Yeah, they'll, so they'll do a second read. And once the second read's approved, depending on if there are changes made, it'll either go back to PCU or it'll come to the board. So it, it probably by, well, your next meeting's probably going to be.
February.
February, so it'll be March.
Isn't there a sixty-day kind of thing for those policies? It's been, what, nine months?
No.
I guess which policy are we talking about?
Seven oh one oh four.
Seven oh one oh four. Yeah, so it came to us. We have conducted the first read. We'll conduct the second read. We'll return it to the sender and then that would be you all.
Do you mind, when did it come?
We received 7.104.
It was midsummer, but you don't act on it until August, so the first time you have a chance to see it is August, and I think the first action was somewhere a time after.
So, 7.104, we conducted a first read and a second read, and we returned it with comments refusing to acknowledge, or not refusing, but saying that we didn't approve it. And this was before I became Board Chair, but that's what happened. So, then it went back to you all, and then we have now received it back. And so, we're conducting first read for the second time on a revised policy.
Yeah. I don't remember the timeline off the top of my head, but...
I believe 7.104, we sent back to the Board and the President in October. So, we would have received it in August. We would have first read it August 2nd and then back in October. It was either September or October. I don't have the date on me, but...
They're not sitting on it, they're moving.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is President Swain's report.
I'll start with a couple of highlights, and that is, many of you have been here before when Louisa Rogers presented. She was recognized for her work. You know, she pulls together a number of community assets and resources to help students that are, you know, so far, single parents, but I think in most cases, single moms. And those of you who were here the night that she presented, I think the lowest number of kids that we were talking about was three, and the most was six. So, you've got single moms with six kids, and they are determined to make themselves better, and so to do that, they've got to get back to school, and handling all the childcare and housing and all that other stuff, enabling them to get back to school so they can better themselves is challenging. And so, Louisa takes that on and just pulls in resources from all over the community to make that happen and not turn anybody away. It's a pretty phenomenal program, and that's her passion, life passion. She does it all the time. And then the second thing is, our welcome back to the SWAC. This is our first home game, basketball game back in the SWAC here. I won't talk about the next day's paper, where it was a tough entry back in the SWAC, but I think the attendance is continuing to increase every month or every week, and so the coaches are challenged and enjoying it. Of course, our wrestling team is still ranked, I think, fifth in the country, and the meeting that was supposed to happen last week, the meet that was supposed to happen last week on Thursday, has been delayed until next Wednesday, and this is Clackamas. They're ranked fourth, we're ranked fifth, so we beat them a couple times, and they still are ranked ahead of us. So, it's kind of our big rivalry, apparently, and so if you're available next Wednesday at six o'clock in Christensen Gym, it'll be a great event, so I encourage everybody to show up for that. So, on to the more formal report. Accreditation, as has been mentioned, our next meeting with NWCCU Full Commission is scheduled for 8:15 on February 2nd. It's out in Seattle. We'll fly out there on the first, attend it in the morning, and then fly back that night. And we can't predict what the outcome's going to want to be, but last time, they have thirty days after the meeting, thirty days to respond with their findings, and last time it was about a week or ten days. They were pretty quick getting it back to us, and that kind of gives us the roadmap forward. But our next report for the next special visit is due on March 6th. So, if you think about, they have thirty days, if they take the full thirty days from February 2nd to March 2nd, they're going to give us that report. We have four days to turn around and submit a report to them on the 6th of March, and then we'll have another visit on the 17th of April. And then we'll have another full hearing or committee meeting with the Full Commission on the end of June. The date hasn't been set, so lots going on there. We updated the, there's a graphic that we produced with the timeline, and that should be up on the web in the Fast Facts for Accreditation, so it should be up there. If it's not up soon, it will be. And then, moving on to enrollment management, we have some really good news for recruiting for the spring. First-time degree-seeking students are up, wait for it, nineteen point two percent. And while, for the past ten years, the report has been fall, you know, other declines of three to six percent, our continuing transfer students is down only one point one percent, so it's almost flat. And there's still eight- and twelve-week courses that students can register for, so we may break even on continuing transfer students. And dual credit enrollment is down, but they haven't started yet, and last Wednesday was supposed to be their big push into the 271 schools, and y'all know what happened last Wednesday is that, you know, all the schools were closed. And so, it was really disappointing for the team that had put that event together, but they're back at it, and we hope to bump our enrollment on dual credit back up. If we're successful on that, we could, for the first time in ten years, have flat or improved enrollment from spring to spring year over year, and that would be a huge turnaround in the program. Another program that many of you don't hear about so much is our Trio Program. They're located just outside, near the advising offices, and Trio Program is a grant-funded program, provides a variety of services to students, mostly first-time college students, first-generation college students. They don't have an example to follow, they don't have parents to follow, some other thing going on in their life that makes it moving on in college a challenge. And that grant funding comes from the U.S. Department of Education, and they get evaluated on their performance every year. They just received their evaluation. I'm going to give you some numbers, and I know, don't fall asleep on me. They're graded on persistence. The goal, their target goal was fifty-five percent, and they achieved eighty-seven percent. They're good academic standing, making sure that the students are making progress in their grades. Their goal was sixty-nine percent. They achieved ninety-two percent. Associates degree certificates on time, twenty percent was the goal. They achieved fifty-two percent. Associates degree and certification and transfer to a four-year institution, so students complete something here and then move on, their goal was fifteen percent. Pathetic. Their accomplishment, forty-two percent. So, they were only funded for one hundred and sixty students, they served one hundred and sixty students, which is, you think that's not remarkable, but in most cases, these organizations, the Trio Programs around the country, they're funded for one hundred and sixty students, and they never see that full, they never get that many students to participate. So, getting one hundred and sixty students to participate and coming up with these performance numbers is really a testament to the hard work, dedication of a lot of people, not just in Trio, but across campus. So, I applaud their efforts and just wanted to make sure that they were recognized for that. So, and it's okay to applaud that. Community stakeholder engagement is another one of our goals. I had the opportunity to tour a company out in Post Falls called ATC. If you drive past it, you don't even know what it is. It's a giant building. They got a sign up front that says ATC. It stands for Advanced Thermoplastics and Composites. They make aircraft parts out of carbon fiber, so they get sheets of carbon fiber in, they manufacture that carbon fiber. They don't make the door for the 737. But it's incredible advanced manufacturing, and so they've got, they're kind of the core group that is putting together this tech hub. And so, I went out, got to visit them. I think they have about a hundred employees. They run two shifts, and there are a lot of things where we could provide training and education and a lot of apprenticeship opportunities to their employees. And so, we're now in the process of working towards that and really ramping things up. So, we've got a lot of opportunities there. I met with this guy CJ Buck. Anybody know who CJ Buck is? CJ Buck is a fourth-generation family of Buck knives. I've been using Buck knives since I was a kid, and I had no idea that Buck knives were still made in America, and they're still made right here in Post Falls. They're still guaranteed for life, and it's their headquarters and their manufacturing is all located right here in Post Falls. They have three hundred and fifty-some employees. There are a lot of semi-automated processes, and so CJ and I talked about, how do we ramp up apprenticeships on our machining? We have capacity to teach people how to use the machine tools. They're going to scale up, I don't know, he gave me some numbers, I don't know that they're public yet, but they're going to increase the size and capacity of their facility. They cannot produce enough knives to meet the demand. Everybody wants to buy American-made, and American-made knives that are guaranteed for life and guaranteed sharp, you can send it back after a hundred years and they'll sharpen it for free. Pretty incredible guys. So, lots of opportunity for us to work with our Workforce Training Center and our career and technical education to ramp up those programs and provide a real partnership with our community. Also, and this is, the next one I'm going to talk about, the next couple I'll talk about are really address two things, community engagement, but also the issue of free speech and, what do we call it? Free speech and academic freedom on campus. I got to meet with a group called the Cootney County Ministerial Association. I was asked to go talk to them. I didn't know who they were. I said yes, and then I asked who they were. And I went down, and there were twenty-three ministers that meet every Tuesday, and I walked in and we had a great conversation. They were very curious, they wanted to know what's going on, and so it was very fruitful, I think, setting the record straight and agreeing to reach across the table and shake hands, and I gave them my email address and phone number, and they said if there are any problems that they hear about, they will reach out. They said they hadn't heard about any lately, but just opening that dialogue between the faith community and the college to make sure that they understand where we're coming from, I think is a real good first step. And that's actually the second group I talked to. Another minister reached out and wanted to meet with me, and I didn't know who he was. He came in and we had a great conversation. He was from one of the downtown churches, and so we'll continue to meet as well. And then, thanks to Trustee Wagner, I was able to meet with a guy named Jim Putman, and I didn't know, I didn't have his name. I just knew that it was a relative of Mike's, and he set that up, and I thought the guy was coming in from out of town. I didn't know he was a local, so I came in and met with him, real straight-up guy, and over the course, it was like, so you work at a church? What church do you work at? He said, you know, he told me in real-life ministries, and I said, oh, I've heard of that church. And he said, so then I said, are you, you know, what do you do there? Are you, you know, one of the pastors, or are you like the man? And he goes, no, I'm the man. I started the church twenty-five years ago. And so, we had a great conversation, same thing. He said, he committed, I gave him my name and my number and my email address, and he committed to addressing any issues within his congregation that where there, an issue might come up, he said, I'll let you know, and I will resolve not to encourage my parishioners not to spread rumors, and I will address any concerns directly with you and give you the opportunity to address them with your campus, and I think that was great. He also clarified that the issue that he has raised and spoken about, he said, like, I may not have been very clear that the issue that I experienced was in 1985. And some people get the idea that it may have been more recent than that, but it was 1985. So, he said he hasn't had any, hasn't heard of anything, but he would be certain to reach out if he did, and I think that was, all three of these meetings have been really much more productive than I expected, and I'd say really good at opening a community engagement and addressing the issues of free speech and academic freedom on campus. So, another local thing, we have an event called Jazz Fest, which is on February 6th, so if you're in the area, it's free in Schuler Auditorium, so I recommend people stop by. And then, in the Boswell Corner Gallery, so it's also in the same Schuler area, we're hosting a watercolor artist by the name of Jessica Bryant. And if you don't know Jessica Bryant's work, she's world-famous, lives right here in Coeur d'Alene, has a studio here in Coeur d'Alene, and does photorealistic watercolor. And you think about watercolor, it's usually muted and kind of blended together, and it's kind of impressionist stuff. When you look at her stuff, it looks like a photograph. It is incredible. So, she's doing a watercolor, you know, display here and also doing a couple of talks. So, really, I think, I hope I can go because I've been very impressed by her work, and hopefully we can make it. So, on the next issue, RFP, and cleaning that up, as you just heard from Matt, the college has done a first review on 7.01.04. The website's up to date, so we're making good progress there. Workforce Training Center programs, as I mentioned before, the ATC folks are involved in Aerospace Tech Hub, and I think just going after, they won the first round, which got them, I think, half a million. The second round is sixty-five, seventy million dollars over five years. They want to make NIC one of their primary projects, so there'll probably be seven projects. Most of them are funding industry that's trying to scale up, and it looks like we're one of the few, maybe the only academic institution that will be identified as one of their prime projects. So, it's a big deal for us if we can get that and kind of, when I got here, Trustee McKenzie asked if we could restart our aerospace program, and this is directly aligned with that, restarting the, what we were doing was mainly thermoplastic stuff for aerospace, so it kind of gives us an opportunity to restart that. The second thing is for Workforce Training Center, a trustee asked me about starting a gunsmithing class about a month ago. So, I reached out to Colby Matilla, who runs our Workforce Training Center, and he said, I'll check into it. And I talked to him yesterday, and he said, okay, our first class is starting on March 1st. So, it took him about six weeks to put that together. It's going to be basic stuff, gunsmithing and maintenance is the, or sorry, bluing and maintenance are the first two classes that he'll offer, and with all the gun shops around here, the need for trained gunsmiths, I think, is pretty high. He did his research, talked to a bunch of folks about that, and so being able to offer that, start off as a pilot program, if we're able to do that for three years and keep it going and keep adding courses, then we will be recognized as one of the NRA-approved gunsmithing programs. So, he's hot on that, really enjoys the opportunity to dig into it. Next topic is career and technical education program alignment. We're continuing to expand dual credit opportunities between Parker and K-Tech, trying to get the K-Tech students to come and do dual credit with Parker, something we haven't done before, and so we were looking for growth there. And then, we, many of you may remember that we got one point three million, seven different grants totaling about one point three million dollars from the state's Career and Technical Education Fund. And that's putting a lot of work on our facilities, folks, because they have to, we have to get the stuff, install it, and have it up and running so that by March 1st, so that we can get reimbursed. So, it's a reimbursement-based grant. So, it's really important that we have that stuff on hand, installed, and operational by March 1st, or we end up buying it ourselves and not getting reimbursed. So, lots of effort by the facilities management to get that in and get it set up, and that will really expand opportunities for our career and technical education, our simulation center, our graphic design, and just everywhere. We're buying some, I think, a semi-truck out at Parker for them. Just across the board, it will expand our opportunities in career and technical education. Transfer program, we're continuing to revise and update our advising guidelines, and something that Kathleen Miller-Green is working on is, how do we update that and make sure that our transfer advisors really know what they're doing and how to advise well? Faculty have a contractual requirement to serve as advisors, but we haven't provided them training, and so we're trying to ramp up the training program, teaching them to be good advisors and know how to help students and direct them to the right resources so that the faculty can engage with students properly. We're reviewing, continuing to review these articulation and transfer agreements with the four-year institutions. We're reviewing, continuing to review these articulation and transfer agreements with the four-year institutions. That, that's causing us to change a bunch of stuff in our IT system so that we can track that, so that students can go, if I want to be a computer scientist and graduate with a four-year degree, where do I start? And, and where you start depends on which institution you want to end up at. And so trying to track all that down, so it's pretty easy to find and easy for the students to track which classes they need to get their associate's degree here and then transfer that. So they start as actual juniors when they get to the four-year institution. You don't waste another year making, you know, taking makeup classes to get all that, the freshman sophomore level requirements done. So that's, that, I thought that was going to be a little easier than it is. And it, it's requiring a little bit of work, but we'll get there. And then we're, we're working, as you heard Kathleen speak about in hers, working on coordinating class start times and end times. Why does that matter? Well, if you come on campus and you want to take two or three classes in the morning so that your employer gives you the morning off, you can knock out three classes and go to work in the afternoon. It becomes a real problem if the, if the English class ends at nine o'clock, but the math class starts at eight thirty. You, you can't have a half hour overlap. You can't leave one class to get to the other. So getting those class times coordinated across the different departments and programs so that they're all starting at, at a common time allows a student to come here and be the most efficient at getting three classes knocked out and then go on and get, go on to work. So again, it sounds easy, but it's, it's, it's not something that's been done before. So it's, it's taken a little bit of work. But as you heard from Kathleen, the faculty, once they understand what the issue is and why we're trying to do it, they've been a hundred percent behind it. And so there, there may be some hiccups, but I think we're, we're well on our way. Support for student athletes, part of this is just our athletic program in general. Continuing meeting with the SWAC, the Sini Quest Athletic Conference regarding the future of SWAC and school alignments. We brought an issue to SWAC and said, look, we, we have three or four regions in the West. And none of them are really well populated. And sometimes the locations of the schools doesn't line up with the regions. And we end up spending a lot more time on the road than if we realigned those, those regions. And so there's work underway to try to do that and, and make it so that everybody can compete at, at a high degree and, and, and spend less money on the road and less time on the road for our students. So that's underway. And I think our, we're scheduled to meet next mid-February. So we'll see how that goes. And they're still updating their bylaws. And because one, one of their concerns is that our students, when they finish their two-year degrees, are, are able to transfer to another institution and finish their four-year degrees if they choose to. So accreditation for them is also an issue. So they've raised accreditation as an issue. And they said, as long as you're accredited, even with sanctions, we'll let you in and we'll let you continue to participate on a year-by-year basis until you're in good standing. So it's likely that until we come off of accreditation, not in good standing, until, until we get back in good standing, we'll be just be approved year to year. And they just approved us for the next year. So we're good for the next year. And we hope that's not an issue next time they meet. And then on academic freedom and free speech, we have, in addition to meeting with, with religious leaders, we had a convocation, which is a meeting of all faculty and all employees right as soon as we get back in January. And we brought in a guest speaker to talk about what, what is academic freedom and what is free speech on campus and what are your roles? And, and so I'll say, a lot of people misunderstand what academic freedom is. And academic freedom is only for people in the classroom. Like, I don't have, I don't have academic freedom. I'm not a faculty member. So the faculty and the students have academic freedom, different kinds of academic freedom. But essentially, if you're hired to be a, a chemistry teacher, then you have wide latitude to teach chemistry. But you don't get into politics and religion. You teach chemistry and you have a wide variety, you know, wide range of things to do. So teaching people about that and, and letting them know, that's how you change behaviors. Letting them know what, what is acceptable behavior here? And what, how do we view academic freedom and, and free speech? So it, it was really good. We had great feedback from faculty. He said it was the most, one of the most productive, maybe the most productive convocations that they've been to since they've been working here. So it was really, the guest speaker was great and, and really appreciate the effort that everybody put into putting that together. And I guess on the, our, our strategic planning team is coming back. So the next, next topic, strategic planning. Next, next meeting with them on campus is going to be the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Again, they'll reach out to stakeholders. They, they have most of that set up. They're going to meet with the area school districts and Coeur d'Alene Tribe and make sure that we're addressing all their needs in the, in the future stakeholder planning. And then before I go to the next topic, I want you to draw your attention to the slideshow that's gone on. And, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more about, about that a little bit later. But last year, there were two, no, one face-to-face class in the summer. I think it was fly fishing, if I recall. Is that right, Colleen? Fly fishing was the only face-to-face class. Everything else was online. This year, we have a bunch more and I'll save that report to later. But that's why you're seeing the, the slides go by that you are. So finally, in President's Report, I'm going to address general comments regarding the legislative session that's ongoing. As far as everybody can remember, there's always been a thing called Education Week. It's usually this week. And all of the schools go down and we talk legislators all week long about education issues and budgets and topics about education. And they have completely changed that. And so, but, and, and wasn't, wasn't really clear. They, you know, the plan was still kind of being put together. But it's finally clear now, at least this week, that there, that we're going to meet with the House and Senate Education Committees on February thirteenth. That's a Tuesday. And then North and South, North Idaho College and College of Southern Idaho are going to present to J F A C on the fourteenth, Wednesday. But the difference in this year is that we don't actually get to present to J F A C. The Legislative Service Officer is going to present, basically, they've got a canned presentation. And they're going to read that presentation into the record. And our role is to sit there. And if the, if the members of the committee have questions, then we'll answer the questions. But we don't have an active role in meeting with, with J F A C. So it's a completely different situation than folks are familiar with. However, I'll say, given the situation, the schedule and the relationships with our contingent legislators, trustee Wagner is going down as chair. But I, I think it would be really helpful. I know trustee Banducci has a relationship with a number of our North Idaho legislators. And so it'd be very helpful if you're available to come down probably on Monday, the twelfth, and then stay on, participate in the presentations on the thirteenth or fourteenth. And either come back, depending on your schedule, the evening of the fourteenth or the morning of the fifteenth with the rest of us. If you, if, if you, and that's, I'll, I'll say that's open to any of the trustees. Of course, you're, one of the roles of trustees is to advocate on behalf of the college. So if anybody else wants to come, that's fine. But I, I, I think Mike and I talked about this. And I think it would be, given your experience with the North Idaho legislators, if you're available to come down. And then if anybody else, if you'll reach out to me afterwards, actually contact Suzie and Kristen, or Suzie or Kristen, and let them know you're interested. But our, our game day for us, game days for us are the thirteenth and fourteenth of February. So let us know so we can get that booked. And trustee Wagner, that concludes my President's Report.
Okay, so I have one question. I know you're talking about, you're asking for money for three different projects, right?
Right.
And I think we've talked about those at the board meetings, so.
We did. We, we talked, it's the same ones we talked about at the workshop. We talked about the board meetings. We talked about them at the legislative send-off. It's the, the, the training location for the, the police officer. But it's, it's really, I, I hesitate to say police officer because it really is going to, anybody that needs driving. So it'll help our, our CDL, it'll help the ambulance drivers, it'll help the snowplow operators if we have a driving course out there on the south side of Parker. So that's number one. And a, and a pistol range for the, for the, for the police officers to work with. And then the second one is funding for our health professions. As we have the capacity to increase health professions by about fifty percent in, in terms of output. So we produce about forty nurses every semester. So we take in forty nurses every fall. Two years later, they graduate. We take in forty new nurses in the spring. Two years later, they graduate. And if you, if you talk to our local hospitals and, and healthcare providers, they, they can't keep nurses, enough nurses. So we have the capacity to increase that by about fifty percent. So sixty nurses fall, sixty in the spring. But we need some additional funding to make that happen. I think the ask was about five hundred and fifty thousand a year. And the issue is personnel. Because all of our medical professions are limited to ten students per faculty member as part of their health profession accreditation body. Are almost all limited to a ten to one ratio. And the, the folks that we need to be instructors are masters level in that, in their degree field. And so getting a masters in nursing to come teach and paying them flat scale, they, they, they won't do it. They don't stick around. So we need to be able to hire more nurses to teach and pay them at a higher rate. And that, so the five hundred and fifty thousand gives us that opportunity. And just keep in mind that we are, North Idaho College is number one of thirteen programs in the state. Nursing programs, number one of thirteen. And you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect this, but we're number sixty-one out of seventeen hundred in the nation. So to be ranked that high, I think that's top five percent, but somebody else can do the math. To be ranked that high in this little community college here in Coeur d'Alene is incredible. And our ability to increase, to, we're, we're producing nurses with the same licensure. They have to pass the same test as the four-year institutions do with a B S N. And it takes them four years to produce nurses. So we're producing nurses in two years for a fraction of the cost. And our nurses are passing their NCLEX exam at a much higher rate, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, than any of the four years. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent is on par with the elite institutions in the country. So it's, it's really incredible what our nursing department does. And it's, that's across the board. Matt is doing that with, with surge tech, our, our pre-physical therapy. Every program we have is, is top-notch. So if we can increase those by adding more faculty, we don't have to build a new building, although we probably will at some point expand. We can increase all those programs by fifty percent and start to take a, a notch out of the demand for healthcare workers in the area. And the final one is cybersecurity. And all of you may remember that we got hit with a cyber attack back in October. And we got really lucky. I mean, we're good, we're good. Ken Wardinsky and his team are really good, but we also got really lucky. And we were only down for about two hours and we didn't pay anything for the, there was no, it was, it was a ransomware attack. We didn't end up paying anything for it. And our insurance coverage, coverage covered a lot of that cost. But keeping that going now that the incident is over runs about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The cost of not doing it and getting hit by another cyber attack could be as much as five million dollars. So it's a real return on investment for doing that. So we're asking for the legislators to support that. And that's, those are the three topics.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Question for President Swain, or comment and a question. Exciting to hear the partnership with the NRA. Some are aware, we have a NRA board member here locally, Dwight Van Horn. And in the past, I was working with him on, to bring a program here to the college. But circumstances and COVID and all the rest of that kind of preempted it. If Colby is already working with him or knows him or is connected with him, that'd be great. If not, I have his contact information.
I, I put Dwight in touch with President Swain.
Okay. Yeah, and so Colby has been working with him.
Okay, great. Because that's a great local resource. And I just wanted to make sure he was in the loop and working with us.
Yep. Yeah, he was really supportive and provided us a lot of details on, on how to get started.
Very good.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, thank you. A lot of good stuff. Let's see. So we're ready for the information, for the, ready for the information items. Dean of Students' Update on Trending Student Needs.
Alex Harris is going to present.
Alex is going to do that.
He's hustling to the podium.
Can I ask one question of Dr. Swain?
Sure.
Chair Wagner. So board business is, needs to happen. And, and these minutes are kind of growing in importance the longer they. Is there a deadline to get items into the board packet? Like, how much time do you need before board meetings to get stuff into the board?
We, we try to set the cutoff at two weeks so that Mike and I can meet and, and have that.
That's for new agenda items, but for items that are already on the agenda that fellow trustees want to incorporate onto the.
It's, it's still two weeks because we got to get the board packet put together and get it disseminated out so it's not coming out at the last time, the last minute. So two weeks.
Friday morning, they submitted, you know, minute recommendations and they're not included in this board packet.
Mike and I talked about that. I think Mike will cover that.
Yeah, I'll cover it. Let's, let's move on to the, on the agenda, the information items. We'll come back to that.
Powerpoint to come up there.
There you go.
All right, Chair Wagner, trustees, President Swain, community members, fellow employees. My name's Alex Harris. I am a dean of students here at N I C. I'm sure you know me by now. I appear on this YouTube channel often. There's where I fit in the scheme of things here at N I C on the org chart. I'm talking about some trending student needs we're seeing this year. A lot of them are continuing for the last two or three years. So I'm just going to highlight a few of those and talk about quickly some things we are doing to address them and things we may want to do to address them. So one of the biggest issues we're seeing here is affordable housing for our students. And we're seeing that for our employees too, but for our students. And obviously, if they're insecure in their housing, it's causes, it's because of financial strain. It affects, it affects all their abilities to be a student, whether it's academic performance, impact on their mental health, and I'll get to that in a minute. And it also affects their ability to graduate on time or stay, stay going to school while they're worrying about where they're going to sleep the next night. This is one of the big reasons why it's become recently a big issue for our students. If you look at the fair market rate for the Coeur d'Alene area, we're more expensive than ninety-four percent of the state of Idaho, which puts a big strain on our students. And just wanted to point out there that the average age of N I C student is twenty-six, which doesn't always give the opportunity to live at home with parents, to save money while you're going to school. Food insecurity goes along with housing insecurity. We've seen it on the rise. We've had our food pantry now, I want to say, for nine years. And we offer dry goods, frozen goods, hygiene project, products. We get all those through donations. Faculty and staff often do food drives. Our student clubs do food drives. And we have community members give to that. So we've seen the rise of that. So just visitors, not visits, so not how many times they visited. Last year, we had fifty-five different visitors for the food pantry, which some of them come weekly, some of them come once, some of them come once a month. Food pantry visitors, just this last fall, we saw a huge increase over the year before. We saw forty. We also, out of the dean of students office, administrate some emergency aid, grocery and gas gift cards and book vouchers. The emergency aid, grocery and gas gift cards are all secured through donations. Staff Assembly this year and Faculty Assembly were able to give us, donate grocery and gas gift cards. We also get book vouchers through our agreement with the, with our vendor for the bookstore. So we see a high, a high use of that also. Health and mental health. Faculty and staff are experiencing a lack of student engagement at higher levels than ever. What's that look like? More procrastination, more talking about mental health issues, lack of motivation. And the really big thing is the lack of coping skills or resilience in our students to face the crises that they're facing in life and not have them carry over into the classroom or face, face crises in the classroom and not be able to not have those carry over into life. Students often report a lack of access to resources for mental health in our community. We don't have a robust system of mental health here in North Idaho. And here at N I C, we currently only have one full-time counselor for all of our students. So it's difficult. Students also bear, report barriers to accessing medical care providers. So that's to get a diagnosis, should they be seeking accommodations or have a health crisis going on. Either they're underinsured, not insured, or don't know how to access health care. So what are we doing or what do we need? So right now, we're working on bringing together areas from around. So, uh, right now, we're working on bringing together areas from around all of our campuses that have previously been disconnected because we're in different, uh, areas of the campus to provide more opportunities for access to students, uh, to team up and make sure we're providing all the resources we can. Um, continuing, um, and also beefing up our connections with community partners for referrals. Um, I am on a team of student affairs leaders in the state that we're working with all the Idaho higher, higher ed institutions to address mental health issues statewide, and also reaching out to our K through twelve institutions because they're experiencing the same thing. And there's obvious, uh, connection that the younger we start intervening, uh, the more successful our student will be. What do we need? Expanded mental health services for students, we need to explore new ways to build students' resiliency, and we need to explore, uh, student housing options, whether that's in community partnerships in our community or if we do it ourselves. So that is a really quick version of some of the highest needs that our students are facing. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, in the past, there's been discussion of new dorms, especially out in Parker area. Uh, are you considering anything like that?
Yeah, those have been, that discussion has come and gone, um, many times in probably the last twelve to thirteen years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's always something that I bring up when we're in meetings. Um, I know Dr. Swain and I had that conversation, uh, early on in his tenure here at NIC. Um, I know they're aware of the need, there's a need on camp, on, on our main campus as well as other campuses that we have. Um, that's as far as we go.
Trustee Banducci.
Well, let's finish the question because while we can talk about it here on campus, and it's really out of the hands of the trustees, it's the dormitory housing authority that has to build the dorm. So I guess the question is, when did they last meet? When are they next meeting? Who's on that? And what, there are the discussions that we've had with them. What are their thoughts and take on it? Are they, um, positive, negative, neutral? Do we have, do we have any insight on, on, uh, on where they're at, or when was the last time we had a, a conversation with them?
Yeah.
I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just asking, because these are the, the questions, because they're the drivers on this, and they're appointed by the governor, so they're a, a whole different chain of command, and we have no influence or, we don't work with them at all, really. So it's kind of a weird deal.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have such an important role in the college, but yet they're a separate entity altogether.
So as, I'm trying to think of a similar experience, as you may recall, when the, uh, REC Center was approved by Dorm Housing Commission, the board had to pass the approval to, for us to move forward on that?
But for the ground. We had to allow them to have the ground to use.
Right, so anything that we would propose would not go to the Dorm Housing Commission before it was proposed here to the board.
Would we, okay. When we did the Student Recreation and Wellness Center, it was kind of on a, in parallel tracks. You know, Grayden Stanley was kind of quarterbacking that, but at the same time, as he was talking to the Board of Trustees and the leadership of the college, I'm, as I recall, he was engaged with the Dormitory Housing Authority too, to see if, if they were interested and, and if they would be supportive, because it didn't make sense to go through all this time and energy and, and effort if we didn't think that they'd be receptive to it. It seemed like that was kind of in parallel, it was, as long as we approved the ground for them to build on, then they were preparing that side.
I'm not privy to the details, um, but I, I can tell you that, um, I'll take direction from Dr. Swain if we want to move forward on a project like that.
Sarah, Sarah and I have, have had conversations with the, um, with the Housing Commission and, um, and one of our challenges right now is, uh, is the attendance, um, it's paid for by student fees. And by, for the dorms, they're paid, the, so the REC Center is paid for by student fees, the dorms are paid for by dorms fees, and, um, we're, you know, we're, we're close to a hundred percent, but not always a hundred percent. And so just getting that kind of justification, and right now, our, our problem is, I think, i- it's a chicken or the egg argument out at, uh, out at Parker, because there, there's a sense that if we had dorms, we could grow the program at Parker. But right now, our program's at Parker at fifty percent-ish. Um, and so we're trying to grow those programs, which will then create the demand needed and the funding needed to provide housing. So we're working through those issues, and it, it is, it is valid, but, you know, right now, we're, we're trying to figure out how to entice them to cover those bonds, because that's, that's the only debt that, and it's not owned by the college, but that's the only debt that's associated with North Idaho College, is the, the REC Center. I think that dorms are paid off.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And, and that's, that's a good point, because that is the equation that we have to deal with. With the Student Wellness Recreation Center, we had an issue with, when, when that was first proposed, enrollment was up here, and then we started doing this, and then the fees weren't covering it, and then, so we started to close it, and it was closed on weekends and nights, and we started having an issue where the kids were in class when this center was open, and then when they could use it, the center was closed. And so we worked on expanding the hours again, something we worked on, trying to get more time on the weekend and the evening, so when the students weren't in class, they could access the facility, especially those, those young folks who were living in the dorms, could walk across and use them. But that was, again, as you used the term chicken and egg, we had to get the fees up to try to get the additional hours that we had cut back.
Right, right.
So...
We're, we're working through that, and I, I think, you know, Sarah and I will continue to work that, and we can talk, and if there's something we can report on next meeting, we will.
Well, I think it's working good, I mean, that was something I know I was involved with, and we all talked and worked on that. Seems like it's improved.
Running wonderfully now, and happy to report on that at any time.
Good, good.
Chair.
Okay.
So you're saying the dorms are running nearly around one hundred percent?
They're, they're real, I don't know, Alex probably knows what the number is.
Yeah, for, for the fall, we were at a hundred percent, and typically, we see, do see a fall off in the spring.
Right.
Just the attrition rate of students and those that have already signed leases elsewhere.
We have a hundred and ninety-seven dorm rooms.
Yes.
And that's, that's kind of unique for community colleges to have dorms. Usually, that's a feature of four years, and I think many of our peer institutions in the state do not have dorms.
The last three falls, we've been full.
Yeah, well, yeah, they're commuter schools by definition.
Right, right.
Right, so when you're talking about insecurity, you're not just talking about the people who live on campus, you're talking about the people who are off-campus because of the really high prices of rent and buying homes.
And sometimes their parents are strapped.
Yeah, and homelessness. I know it's anecdotal, but not joking, uh, a week or two weeks don't go by where I either hear from a staff member or a student themselves that they're living out of their car, not that the staff member is, but that a student has told them that. So it, it's a real issue facing our students.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Chair Wagner.
Go ahead.
I, I think if you're not hearing it, the board is happy to pass a resolution in support of heading towards a dorm direction and spending money in that direction, we just need guidance in getting there.
Yep.
So, like, we've heard this for three years, and it's obviously, everyone's seen housing prices go up, I'd be flabbergasted to see if it doesn't pencil, so...
We'll have to work the, the formula with them on the number of dorm rooms per students is kind of the, getting them to approve it is, is a challenge, but we'll work on that.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Nick, I don't know if this precedes you or not with the discussion of possibly something out there, but one of the concepts, and maybe this is still on the board, I think Alex was part of this, maybe, I'm not sure how far back this goes, when we looked at maybe a facility out at the Parker Center, it was to set it up in such a way that if we had to, we could partition it off, so some of it could be used by students, but some of it could be used by the community if we wanted to rent out, if there were housing needs in the Rathdrum area where people could rent from us to subsidize the, the facility if we weren't at max capacity. And there were some ways that we could do that and, and, and build that in mind as we set it up, and pods, and how we would do things. So I don't know if that's still, you know, part of the model that we would look at.
Some of what we're, um, considering as part of this training facility at Parker, one of the issues with filling our post-academy is also housing.
Housing.
And so, uh, coming up with some housing options that would work out there, that would not necessarily require millions of dollars in investment, is, uh, is a pathway that we are exploring now to see if we can come up with, kind of what you might see, you know, the, the...
But, but something a little better than construction trailers.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Christine.
Think there's a lot of opportunity here, just...
Yep. Christine was reluctant to drive down, uh, from Sandpoint last week because of the snowstorm, so we were planning on having her on Zoom, um, and, uh, now we have her in person. Um, and so, Christine, take it away.
I really do appreciate the decision to postpone. It's a long ride home for me, so, um, I'd rather do it in the rain than the snow, so thank you for that. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, President Swain, NIC colleagues, students and guests. I am Christine Callison, and I'm the Regional Outreach Manager for North Idaho College. I have been a part of the NIC family for more than seventeen years. For the past ten years, I've managed the Sandpoint campus. Our operations are included in enrollment services under the leadership of Tammy Haft. NIC has served the Bonner County area, uh, with services for more than twenty years. And as you may recall, in twenty twenty-two, we consolidated into one building, the Pine Street Annex. This is the Pine Street Annex. Our campus is conveniently located in downtown Sandpoint with plenty of parking, and, thanks to the support, President Swain, Sarah Garcia, Tammy Haft, and the marketing team, we have a brand-new sign.
Now, now, you should have shown them the old sign.
Yeah.
Because the old sign still had LCS-C on it.
Yeah.
And it was half-broken down, so...
It was, it was well outdated, and, um, it, it was a project that we had aspired to do, and I, I really appreciate the support in getting it done. This sign is located on a very busy street in downtown Sandpoint. Um, we wanted to use it to highlight our services and advertise our local contact information. It really looks great, and day or night, you cannot miss it. It's huge, it's lit up at night, uh, and we're really grateful for the folks that help us get it in place, so thank you for that. As most of you know, we are a very small team at NIC Sandpoint, but we work hard to provide a great experience for our students. Here are some of the friendly faces you might see if you visit our campus. We are also supported by our colleagues in Coeur d'Alene, and we are very grateful for that. Many staff and faculty visit our campus to meet with students and teach classes. For example, President Swain mentioned Louisa Rogers earlier, she comes up to Sandpoint frequently to host office hours, scholarship and resume workshops, and she even helped us to establish a Sandpoint Food Pantry as well in the last year, that is well-visited and much appreciated. So thank you to Louisa and all of our Coeur d'Alene colleagues for supporting our outreach students. Our population is very diverse, and we serve many different types of students, including adult education, workforce training, and of course, degree-seeking students. Here is a snapshot of top, some of the top academic programs for Bonner and Boundary County students. We consistently see strong interest in general studies and also dual credit. Other top programs include business, education, and all things related to health professions. Outreach students who choose to enroll in classes located at the Sandpoint campus have many options available. Each semester, we offer a different selection of courses, mostly focused on gen-ed core classes that apply to many degree programs. Here is a snapshot of the Spring twenty twenty-four classes that are being offered in Sandpoint. A couple of key things to highlight here. First, we are very pleased to offer a Biology one-seven-five lab. This class is a gateway to many of the health profession's pathways, and our students greatly appreciate having the lab in Sandpoint. Also, this week, I learned that we will be adding biology tutoring in addition to the lab, and the first session of that tutoring met today. Another great highlight is PE one-eleven. Isn't that right, Colleen? One-eleven. This is outdoor adventures, and it will be the first time we've offered this class in Sandpoint. It will be taught by our communications instructor, Dawn Kinsey. Dawn has a very extensive background in outdoor education, and we're really excited to offer this class. Many thanks to the PE Department for supporting the concept. And by the way, the class is late start, and there are still seats available. So sign up now for outdoor adventures. This is your public service announcement. Speaking of classes, let me show you some pictures of our campus. These are our two lecture classrooms, as you can see, they are both set up for Zoom. Here, we have our science lab and our health professions lab, and finally, our computer lab, and on the right, our testing lab. And let's talk about testing for a minute. We do a lot of proctoring in Sandpoint. Every semester, hundreds of exams at Sandpoint Center. For some context, here's a breakdown of the different types of tests that we administer. The largest sections, the dark blue and the orange that you're seeing there, those are for credit classes at NIC. We also administer placement testing and entrance exams, such as the Alex, the T's exam for the nursing program. We are currently doing GED testing in Sandpoint, and we also offer support services for our Idaho partners, LCS-C and University of Idaho. A lot of those students were formerly NIC students. In addition to testing, the Sandpoint campus, of course, provides a whole lot of other support services as well, and we serve all different types of students. Community members can receive onsite assistance in Sandpoint with admissions, academic advising, financial aid. They can receive tutoring and coaching from the Math Education Center, thanks to Sarah Adams in the Math Department. We offer non-credit GED prep classes, workforce training programs, and once in a while, we throw a big party and we give away a lot of swag. A quick word about the students that are pictured here. Lisa on the left, graduated from NIC in December with an associate's degree in physical education. Finn in the center is a continuing student, taking online classes. And Hattie on the right, finished all the classes she needed at NIC and has continued on to the University of Idaho. Looking ahead into twenty twenty-four, the Sandpoint campus has several goals for the upcoming year. As always, recruitment is a top priority. Our number-one ongoing goal is to make connections with prospective students and their families. In recent months, we have participated in several events at local high schools, and we plan to continue this work and variations of that throughout the year. Another goal is to review our current space utilization and develop plans to improve our campus. Our long-term goal is to add an additional large classroom and create dedicated space for tutoring and math education. In addition, with the help of Alex Harris, we are evaluating ways to improve campus safety. We have a great space, we are working to make it better. Finally, NIC is always looking for new ways to engage our community and share good news about the work that we are doing. Later this spring, we will be hosting our very first NIC Grad Fest in Sandpoint, thanks to Ellie Michael from the Marketing Department. We look forward to celebrating our outreach students and their achievements. We are a very small campus, but the impact of our work, in my opinion, is very significant. People come to us from Bonners Ferry and Clark Fork, Boye Springs, all the far corners of our northern counties. Most of our students are non-traditional, and many of them are first-generation as well. Community members consistently express appreciation for the access and the service that we provide. I, for one, am very proud of the work that we do. I appreciate the opportunity to share some updates with you, and I hope you will visit us in the Pine Street Annex. Thank you. I welcome your questions.
Christine, thank you for the presentation. I imagine you're enjoying the new building. I remember we had a board meeting in the old building, and we were down in the gymnasium on the floor. Um, I also remember, at that time, we had a Bonner's location that you guys have absorbed, but I also remember we did a pretty big fundraiser to get that wet lab there, and at the time, we, uh, were able to say that you did not have to leave Sandpoint to get an associate's degree. Is that still the case for us with our offerings up there?
I would say yes. Our course selection has been reduced in the last couple of years because of, of variety of circumstances. We don't need to go into that.
No, no.
But it is absolutely possible for an outreach student to acquire an associate's degree without coming to Coeur d'Alene. Many of the students that we serve, uh, take a combination of classes at the outreach campus, online, and some in Coeur d'Alene, it's usually a combination of all of those things. Um, but it is absolutely possible with strategic planning, smart academic advising, students can do it.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I know the enrollment's kind of shrunk, we've combined some, and, and as I recall, I think we were trying to raise fifty thousand at the time, I think we raised a hundred, if I recall, Sandpoint really... Sandpoint really stepped up, and the mayor was supporting it, and it was pretty exciting. And so, I didn't know how that was working out with like, with circumstances and the way things have worked out. So, I was curious.
The fundraising that you're referring to supported the, the science lab, and it is continuously used throughout the year. It's definitely a place where we have capacity there to potentially do more if we had the student demand for it, if we had faculty to support the class instruction there. But we continue to look at ways where we can expand. Like, for instance, last summer, we had a geology class. We have a lot of students that need those science credits, and we had a geology instructor who was willing to come to Sandpoint once a week to conduct the lab for a group of Sandpoint students. The lecture components were online, and the lab was live in Sandpoint, in addition to the lab that happened in Coeur d'Alene. So, thanks to the faculty and, and our staff and our space, we were able to provide that class for students for the first time. So, there's definitely capacity there for things we can do in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. And I saw that you're considering just new space, square footage, and how best to utilize it. One of the, I forget what training it was, some ACCT event in Philadelphia. We got a tour of their new library, and they completely redid their whole library. And one of the things that I took away from there is they had new, like, rooms you can reserve that were totally decked out for kind of the new Gen Z influencer, kind of people who do podcasts and like, kind of that digital presence for, for marketing. And they said it's just constantly booked up. So, it may just be a new thing that you offer to the community or just, just, just an idea for bringing people in the door, and then you can use it for other things.
I, I think I said last year when I made our report to explain the process of consolidating into the Pine Street Annex, we gave up quite a lot of square footage when we moved from one, from the larger building all into the smaller Pine Street Annex building. But I, I will tell you, I will be the first one to tell you, we don't necessarily need a lot of space. We need strategically-planned and used space. I would rather see full rooms that are used for multipurposes all day, every day, than to have a bunch of empty classrooms that don't get used very readily. So, we don't need a lot of space, we just need to be very intentional in how we use it. And that's definitely one of our goals in talking with Sarah and planning for the space that we do occupy. In that building, the Pine Street Annex, we now have all but one suite in the building. All of the second floor is NIC, and, and we really have a great place to start from. I mean, we have functional spaces now, but we can continue to improve it if we're smart and strategic.
Do you have a way to, to kind of track that room usage metrics? Is that?
We do, it's, it's tracked in multiple places. It's not like a singular measure. Like, you can measure the number of credit class sections, the number of students enrolled in those sections, but then you have to account for non-credit programming and community activities and student use. When I was talking about testing, it, I mean, it's kind of an interesting point to make. About eighty percent of the test proctoring that we do are for students who are not enrolled in the sections that we offer in Sandpoint. They are students who take online classes or Coeur d'Alene sections, and they test at our Sandpoint campus. So, that's a very significant activity that we are offering to our student population, but it's not measured by enrollment in our local classes, if that makes sense. So.
Just, Mike, if I, my, Dr. Dooman and I are, are planning to go up and visit with the North Idaho superintendents. We're starting with Becky Meyer in, in Sandpoint. Because our enrollments are down, and I think there's, there's a, you know, one of the, one of the fallouts of COVID is people forgot we're up there. And so, trying to reengage with them and, and make sure that they know we're there, even though we had a great sign, making sure that they know we're up there and, and able to provide a wide variety of courses. And the other thing we're looking at is starting a presence up there on our Pine Street Annex with workforce training center classes, because they're more dynamic. There's a, there's a really an incredible number of aerospace companies up there that we're not currently engaged with because we don't offer that kind of training and programming. And so, we're, we're looking at getting up there and trying to offer, figure out what the community needs and then providing that. And so, we're hoping to get things ramped up.
Two further questions related to what you're talking about. One is you're talking about going up to Bonner and Boundary. What about Shoshone and Benowa?
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time, okay. So, those are in your plans?
Yeah, I mean, so I think, we already have the facility and everything in, at, in Sandpoint, and the challenge is it's not being utilized to the extent it could be. And so, I think because we already have the facility, let's get it up and, and closer to operating where it's, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent capacity, and then we can start going to the other outlying counties. And I, I think that's, those are great ideas, but, but I think, but let's, we gotta, we gotta build back. And I think COVID really kicked our butts in terms of enrollment up there, because people just don't know we're there. So.
And in terms of the other thing about your, it looks like you've made a number of comments tonight about composites aircraft. Now, remember, I worked for Boeing for nineteen years and.
Before the door.
And before the door, and actually sat out in the factory where they were building. My place, my office was right next to the seven-seven-seven tail assembly.
Okay.
Thing, so I'm, I'm very familiar with that. So, is, are you looking to use the, the organization next to the airport in Spokane to start doing some things?
Well, that.
Can you leverage that further?
So, that's the hub where they want to bring things. But what we proposed is, is really the academic pipeline, the education pipeline that would go from, for example, maybe prototyping at Gizmo. How do you prototype and build new ideas that then you could get funded for? And then go to a, a larger facility where you could prototype those on a larger scale, but also provide training on, on scale models or full-size models of thermoplastics and, and probably doing that at our Workforce Training Center in Post Falls. And then being able to work closely with the experts at the, the AT, ATC, which is really right across the highway. And then, and then those, once that's done, those, those manufacturers, once they've prototyped the, the part or the system that they're trying to use, they would then move over to the hub outside the airport.
For the actual manufacturing?
For the actual manufacturing.
But it lets more of the engineering end of things would be done by people schooled at NIC, which sounds tremendously good.
Yeah, we would help, and we would provide facilities. And, you know, our, the interesting thing at most engineering schools, they don't teach you the hands-on part of engineering. They teach you the theoretical side. And so, I think our, working with, everything from Gizmo to, to Parker gives us the opportunity to do the hands-on part of the engineering, building the prototypes, working with them to build the prototype. So, I, I think that's really a sweet spot for us. And we've already got a lot of that with, you know, people don't realize that the University of Idaho's engine, robotic engineering program is located in the Headland Building. I mean, that, that's its, that's its home base is in the Headland Building. It's not in Moscow, it's here. And so, being able to utilize that kind of engineering resource and, and horsepower to, to start growing those thermoplastic programs, I think is really key. We, we're really in a sweet spot for that.
Right, and, and what you have is like a core of companies. And then, if you've produced enough people, then those companies can expand. And that, carbon fiber is obviously, and, and other plastics are certainly an expanding area.
And they're just cool.
Oh, they're cool too, yeah. Pick up an aluminum part that Boeing made and then convert it to a carbon fiber? It's like a feather versus.
Right, right.
I mean, it's amazing, and yet it's as strong as steel.
Yep.
Anything else? Nope, so, finance update is next, I see. Are you, Sarah, I assume?
Yep, so Sarah's, Sarah's gonna hit it.
Good evening. Come on, Tom. There we go. Good evening, I'm just, you all know me, Sarah Garcia, trustee Wagner, Chair Wagner and trustees, colleagues and friends. Just a real quick update for you on where we are year-to-date. So, we finished, we closed out the second quarter of the year at the end of December, just late last week, right around the time the board meeting was supposed to originally occur. And so, I'm just gonna go over a very few short slides and, and share with you where we are. So, December year-to-date revenue is very comparable to last year. Last year, the total revenue at this point in time was, was just under twenty-eight million. This year, we're right around twenty-seven million. We are right on target with budget in those categories. Just for reference, in case you can't read the tiny print at the bottom, the blue box is tuition, the orange box is state funding, the gray box is local funding, and the yellow box is other. Year-to-date expenses, so again, we are, sorry, I lost my point. We're again in line with budget and very comparable to, a little bit higher than last year. This time, we have seen some decreases in our equipment and supplies line items, mostly because of COVID. So, we had HERF money last year, and we were using a lot of that for equipment and supplies in the IT area. So, we have seen a decrease in, in the spending in those areas. We have had increases in our travel spending as people get back into the habit of actually leaving town post-COVID and, and our services line, which includes insurance, professional services, and advertising. I did not reflect the personnel costs on this chart, but they were sixteen million in December of last year and sixteen point nine million in December of last, of this year, sorry. And that accounts for approximately seventy percent of our total expenses. And then, my last money slide is just where we are year-to-date. So, the orange bar is our, is our full-year budget, and the blue bars are our year-to-date through December actual expenditures. So, our general expenses at this point are about fifty-four, just under fifty-five percent of our total budget for general expenses. Our personnel costs are at forty-three percent of our budgeted personnel costs. As we all know, we, we have had a lot of, we still continue to see some attrition, and the revenue is at fifty-two percent of our budgeted amount. The next phase in my life, now that we have finished audit, is budget. So, just as we move into the second part of the year, we start talking about budget. The first steps in our budget process, I'm just gonna give you a, a quick overview tonight. First steps are to establish our priorities and our planning principles, with the support of the board, of course. The key to this is, so our, sorry, our priorities and planning principles for last year were chiefly focused on the key areas of strengthening recruitment and retention, also creating a balanced budget with limited or no increase in property taxes or tuition rates. And I think that's a good place to start the discussion again this year. Part of the process we need to do is establish the assumptions that we'll be sharing with the rest of campus so they can develop their departmental budgets. Key to that is the enrollment projection. So, I have asked the recruitment team that is working, has been working diligently since last fall to work with the camp, look at the campaigns that they're doing, look at launch, look at the programs we're offering, and help to determine an enrollment target for next year and that we can use for budgeting purposes. The other big piece of the assumptions involves personnel costs. So, that will typically be the state change in employee compensation that comes through the legislature and benefit increases. Currently, our, we won't know our benefit rate increases until late February. At this point, we are expecting probably a minimum of a five percent increase in our medical insurance costs. Also, critical in budget development is always the position planning. Yes, sir.
Well, sorry, I thought we were, for one of the insurance categories, I thought it was medical that we were kind of overpaying, and so, we're kind of now underpaying, going back in line. Does that ring a bell?
No, last year, there was no increase. And so, that was, it was a flat budget year, year-over-year. This year, they're expecting an increase in, in medical costs. Not huge, but some.
I'll save my question, and thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. From what I've seen, I would expect the increase in, from what my groups are doing and my, with the people I work with and everything, so yeah. Wouldn't be surprised if it's eight to twelve percent or fifteen. And our Medicare people, the individual plans all just got hit too, so. Sarah?
Yes, sir.
What do you anticipate the bait and switch to be from the state this year? By that, I mean, they always offer us money, but to take it, we've got to add more money to it to plus it up and make it even across the board. So, they kind of say, we'll give you this, and then we look at it and goes, okay, but then we got to add this much to it. So, we either got to come out of hide with more money and find it out of the budget to balance it up and make everything equal, or we have to forfeit out their offering. Do we have any idea what that's gonna look like this year?
I, I don't have insight into those tea leaves at this time. I, I really don't know.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, have they given you any?
I have not heard anything.
I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know you, you're working on this, and maybe I'm a little bit ahead of your slides. Excuse me, but last year, we had a, a issue, because we got down to the last minute, and then there were some change, things that were unclear, and then we had to move the budget out for a year, for a month, and that type of thing. And I know you have talked about setting up a whole schedule. Do you have a schedule that we can, that the board can have that basically has the key milestones for the budget process?
I haven't established, we haven't established dates for the key milestones, but I do have a slide that shows kind of every month what, what the, what will be going on.
Right, and, and I, and then the other thing is, you have assumptions here for, financial assumptions for overhead, et cetera. Will you be publishing anything that talks about program changes and the cost it would be to do the program changes?
So, that, that's, that's part of the strategic planning process? That we're, we're waiting for them to give us big-goal projections on what we need? And then, once we have those, that'll feed into that. So, yeah, that's part of, part of the plan. We, we may get to a time crunch, but that's, that's what we're hoping to, that's the timeline.
Right, we've talked about the fact that you're trying to get that done by the end of April.
Right.
And it's, and that's as fast as you can do it. So that we, are you focusing the resources on where they need to go and defocusing, if I can use that, on where they don't need to go? And, and that's the normal process, and I'm, I'm very pleased to see that proceeding because I had thought that that was a weakness from before you came.
Yep, we're working on it. Thank you, yeah. Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
You knew I was coming back. When I'm, when I'm just trying to compare pages one and two and then three and four, and I'm looking at the operating revenues, state and local revenues, the revenue page versus the expenses page, and as I'm looking at the annual budget, then I would look at the projected actual year-to-date through December, and then how that compares to the whole year, say we're halfway through. When I'm looking at the variances, I'm not sure I'm understanding. The variances appear larger, and I'm, I'm not sure I can reconcile what I'm looking at here. For example, on page three, on the operating revenue, my variance, year-over-year variance is minus twenty-three. So, that means I've, I've got one point four million less in revenue. So, I'm down twenty-three percent from where I was in equal time in 2023, correct? But when I look at page one, and I've got total operating revenue, I've got the four million, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, four forty-four. And at that point, year-to-date, we're forty-nine percent of the budget. The year-to-date budget's forty-seven. Is the variance there that I'm looking at then is our, the difference between our projected budget for twenty-four versus the year-over-year budget? Is that the difference in the two, two different numbers for the variance? Is one where I'm at in my current year trajectory versus the one is where I'm at in the trajectory versus the prior year?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, we go ahead?
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right. So again, part of the development is talking about position planning. We'll need to discuss the positions that were held for the FY, for the current year budget and have discussions about those held positions and determine if there are any new, need for any new positions. As you, as you said, Chair Wagner, if we have, we have no new programs coming or program expansions, there may be a need to add faculty members or other personnel in order to support those initiatives. Our adjunct and overload planning is usually very much aligned with our enrollment projections. So we calculate what we need in order to cover all those courses. We look at contractual increases, so we have a lot of contracts that increase, just, you know, they have a standard increase every year, cost of living, not cost of living, sorry, inflation costs. And then we look, always look for areas for expense savings. And again, that is an opportunity then to redirect those funds towards the items that we've identified as priorities for the institution, either through the strategic plan or some other mechanism, ideally through the strategic plan.
Good.
And so this is a very high-level look at the timeline for the budget. So next month, we'll want to get agreement on priorities and principles so that we can put together a budget guideline that will then, in March, be used by the individual departments to develop their departmental budgets. At the same time, we'll be working, we'll have a little bit of information from the Strategic Planning Group and also conversations we have at President's Cabinet level about priorities and and the priorities of the board. And then in April, we'll compile the requests and prepare and bring a first reading to the board. Right after that, after that, we will make adjustments based on the the feedback we got from the April reading and bring a second reading in May. That's, that's kind of the standard schedule that we shoot for.
So it looks like, from a practical standpoint, since the plan, strategic plan does not come out until April, that you're doing all this in parallel, and then you'll make up a budget and then just adjust it for the changes that are, as the priorities change from a school standpoint.
We'll learn along the way with the strategic plan, what what's, some of the feedback is that we're getting, and we can incorporate that in as we plan. Yes, absolutely, we will adjust as we go.
Right, it looks like you're going to be very busy in April and May.
Usually am.
Okay. Anything else?
One last question.
Did we have a different timing on the payment for the liquor tax this year?
Did, okay.
Yes.
Getting the second payment later this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, anyone else want to have any questions?
Are we going to have like a workshop? Or is it going to be during the next, are we going to have a workshop next month? Or is it going to be on the regular board meeting? Or is it going to be conversations individually? How was the board, what are we doing in February?
I think the chair and I will.
I am open to whatever the board would like us to do and and the president would like me to do. I'm happy to accommodate whatever needs to happen.
Yeah, the key here is, we need to communicate and understand as we go along so that nobody gets any surprise at the end, and we can, it's basically a done deal, and we just approve it. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the finance update. So now we need the summer 2024 update.
So we we gave a little bit of a teaser with the, with the slides that were going on while I was speaking earlier. Last year, we had one class that was on, that was in-person. This year, we have, we're up to 28. I want to highlight a couple that are interesting and as well as a couple that are really important for students that are trying to work through their degrees. You know, guitar lessons. A lot of, we tried to identify classes that people might want to take if they're here for the summer on vacation. And they, you know, they kind of, you know, sitting on the beach gets old after about the second week. And and so we come up with some, some courses that I think will interest folks. So guitar, creative writing, poetry, a couple of the classes I think will really contribute to folks that want to make progress while they're here. Intermediate algebra, math in modern society, college algebra, analytic geometry, and statistical reasoning, as well as human anatomy and physiology. And that's a, that's an important class for anybody that's in a pre-med or a nursing program at a four-year institution. Very tough class. We're going to try to do it in a short amount of time. But very few community colleges have the opportunity to offer anatomy and physiology, a three-credit anatomy and physiology class with a one-credit lab. And and those two things, a three-credit class and a one-credit lab, are required to get to advance in the nursing program. So somebody that is, you know, a nursing, a nursing student at Boise State or one of the other four years in the region is going to be able to come here and knock that out and then transfer it back to their home institution when they, when they return. So that's a, that's a really important class, and we, I pushed real hard with our science faculty to offer that because they're not sure how that's going to work in a, in an abbreviated time period. But I think for students that really want to take it, they can focus on that one class and and make some real progress for, that will help them out when they return back to their home institutions. Similar kind of situation with chemistry, the intro to chemistry class in lab. And then a couple of other things I would say are kind of fun classes, PE classes, beginning rock climbing, beginning sailing, beginning yoga, lake kayak and canoeing, tone and trim, beginning fly fishing, stand-up paddleboards, Tai Chi for seniors, and a first aid class. And then INTR, which is an interdisciplinary course on teaching and learning in the outdoors. So that's just a, kind of a sample, and the listing will be up online, and you'll be able to to check it out. But, you know, these courses are open to the community, as well as anybody coming in from, you know, to Coeur d'Alene for a visit over the summer. So I I hope that this really bumps up our summer enrollment. That's the intent, and the faculty, I'll say, really stepped up when I asked them to increase from one, on, you know, one face-to-face class, they really were able to step up and and offer a significant number. I don't know what the percentage is, going from one to 28, but it's pretty significant. And I I hope that that appeals to the, our constituents. So that's, that's all I had on that report. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can or get back to you if I can't.
And then I guess you're up next, unless someone?
I'm up next, yeah. So if you turn to tab one, I don't have a major presentation on this, but folks have been asking about our memberships. And we went through, and Sarah Garcia and I and many of the department heads went through these. And as you can see, based on the, the change from 2023 actual to 2024 anticipated, we made notes kind of off in the, in the fourth column there about what's happened. But we canceled a bunch of of programs. We were able to reduce the expenses on several. And these, I think, are, what we have remaining are the ones that we really need to have to operate in a healthy manner. And we've reduced our expenses from 157,783 last year to 123,689 this year. So we saved, you know, $25,000 in just reducing those memberships that either weren't being used or were repetitive or duplicated elsewhere. So I'd, I'd say, you know, thanks to Trustee McKenzie for for making this an issue because saving $25,000 is pretty significant, and we were actually happy to do it. So pending questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Appreciate you guys scrubbing this list. One of the questions I would have, a couple, but one is, I've gone through and looked at the list, and I suspect that some may be required as part of our memberships because of our course offerings and and some of the different academic tracks. I'm sure there's some with the nursing and other health professions and stuff like that. Sometimes I wonder, are we, are any of these, because we're helping to support them, but we don't really need to? Or is it, feels good to do it? I mean, how much of that do we have? Because there's a lot of stuff on here that appears duplicative to me, but I don't know exactly what's required and what's not. So some of these, I'm not quite sure how much we really have to have. And I, and I do have one question specifically, what was EAB Global?
That was a, it's, I'd say it's similar to ACCT. And is that, which one is it? There were two, AGB and ACCT Global.
Well, yeah, you had the American Association and the AGB you got rid of, and those two I recognize, and I know those. But the EAB Global was something I wanted to mention.
EAB was Executive Advisory Board, I believe is what it stands for. And it's, they do similar things, like ACCT, and we just weren't using them.
Were they part of that group that came out to visit and look at the Headland Building and make?
No, 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 that's not them, no. No, this is a more national organization like ACCT, so that wasn't, that was not them, no. And nobody could actually, we asked and couldn't find anybody that was using their services. So I'm sure they're a good organization, but it seemed to be duplicatious with what we're getting from ACCT. Same thing with AGB.
I noticed we, we reduced Jobs Plus, or what we call EDC, from 15 to five. Do we have any input on that? Because I know even, Ned DePriest was here earlier, sharing about saving money. The city of Hayden went to zero with EDC, and others are doing similar things. So I'm surprised that we're still supporting them at $5,000.
So it's, I wouldn't say supporting them, it's a membership. U of I, when I checked into it, U of I was paying 5,000. I think 15,000 seemed like it was more of a support than a membership. So we talked to them, and they, we're going down to the same level as Idaho. Just keep in mind that, you know, it's, I think it's unfair to compare us with municipalities. They're, one of their main missions, and they continue to do it, and I've gone to their meetings, they are working very hard to keep businesses here and to recruit new businesses here. And and they are heavily supported by Coeur d'Alene. But Hayden, if if somebody comes to the Coeur d'Alene area, they're, they're likely not to build a new facility in the city limits. Where are they going to build it? In Hayden, in Rafteram, Post Falls? And so I'd say that Post Falls and some of those municipalities that have canceled their memberships are really kind of taking advantage of Coeur d'Alene, who continues to support them. And every, every meeting is is very informative. They provide information on all of the companies that are looking to come here and looking to expand. And so being on that board is is really good. I mean, they may be involved in other things you may or may not like, but those are the core missions, and they continue to do them. And and on a, I guess on top of that, they are the, the main point of contact for the economic development aspect of this tech hub grant. And so the Ginny Gilliam is the person that they contact for economic development in the region. And so if we pull out of that organization, we lose contact with with Ginny Gilliam and the, and the EDC. So the, the Chamber has a role, the economic development has a role, and those are all stakeholders in our community. And so they may do some stuff that you don't like, but I think, you know, you could probably say that about every organization that's on here. But for $5,000, it seems like a, that we are now a member as opposed to a sponsor. 15,000 seemed more like a sponsorship, so I think it's well justified to keep that going.
Okay, well, I kind of wanted to hear the thought process because that kind of applies to the Chamber of Commerce's too. You just made the case why the municipality should be supporting it. In the college case, I'm still not sure I agree with that. I would be surprised if Ginny Gilliam suddenly said, hey, you're not giving us money, so we're not going to engage with you because to get that grant, you've got to have the college. The college is the, is the, is the linchpin to that in our relationship with Gonzaga and in the other institutions. So they kind of need us more than we need them, ironically. And then we've got a pretty good, we're giving money to all the chambers of commerce. So again, we're subsidizing the communities, and even some of the communities aren't subsidizing the program. I find that interesting.
Well, I, I think those organizations all have to have members to support the organizations. If if you don't have members, the organization goes away, and then there is no economic development for people to contact. If there's no economic development organization for people to contact, then organizations that are looking to expand in this area typically won't choose the area because there's no point of contact. So it requires funding to support. And I think our role as, as a community member is to participate in those organizations where membership is necessary for the organization to to continue. So I think we're now at a membership level as opposed to a sponsor level, and I think that's an appropriate way, place to be.
It creates a philosophical discussion. We're not in the commerce business, we're not businesses, and Chamber of Commerce is, by definition, they represent the businesses. You know, Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, they have all that representation. They engage with the legislators for for legislation, hopefully favorable tax-wise and otherwise to their businesses and those sorts of things. So we're, we're a college, public institution of learning. So it's interesting, you know, to have the discussion of what our role is in that or not. So maybe for another time, more of a philosophical discussion. But to me, chambers of commerce are business-led by the businesses in their individual communities. Now, there are some businesses that choose to be members of multiple chambers of commerce, that's their choice, but.
That's, it's, it's how we engage with those stakeholders. It's, it's a place where they, many of our local businesses go and attend so we can reach out to them and and engage with them very efficiently. And those businesses that are operating, operate, many of them operate and are, continue to be competitive because of our students. So learning from them what they need as they need it and how changes are coming comes as a benefit of being a member of those organizations. So I, I see no, there's, I, I don't see if there's any, there's no air between us and the business community. And there can't be. We're, as a technical, you know, community college.
I don't see the direct benefit.
Okay.
Chair, if I could be recognized?
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I see a lot of membership fees have gone up from last year to this year, and yet we still, I noticed these grand totals have gone significantly down. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I can tell there's been work and discussions that have happened to get this list under scrutiny. So, and I just wanted to ask, is there a reason, kind of the rotaries and things seem kind of spread out? Is the Rotary Club of Coeur d'Alene, it's in the institutional memberships, and then you have the Sunrise Rotary Club and the Marketing Community Relations?
So that, that was, that's canceled. It was a, that was an individual member, and no individuals are members of that organization, so it was canceled?
Not, neither of them, lowered, some of them were lowered, but none were canceled.
No, there's still two rotaries, one under Marketing Community Relations, that's 53978, it was lowered.
Well, that's because there were still some bills, there were bills that were paid in this fiscal year, but the actual organization has canceled, so we're, we're no longer a member of that.
Of both, of both one?
Of the Sunrise.
Of the Sunrise one?
Yeah. And and all of those, what we tried to do is move all of the chambers of commerce and rotaries and and the community and the EDC, all of those are now part of the institutional memberships. So we consolidated all those because what we found was like, the athletic department was a member of Chamber, but we already had an institutional membership. There was no reason for us to have individuals in the athletic department have a membership and the institution have a membership. So those were eliminated. So you've seen some of those changes, and if, and if the, some of the charges took, have already taken place in this fiscal year, then you're seeing charges there. But for, in most cases, those have been canceled or scaled back to.
No, yeah, I appreciate the comment for canceled for 2024, and appreciate the clarification because it, it doesn't say that for Sunrise, but I believe you.
Okay.
Thank you for clarification.
That would be for 2025, though, correct? Like for Sunrise?
Well, so, so we've canceled them now, but some of those, some of those things, it takes a while for them to end. So there, there's a charge there, but we've notified them that we're not going to continue.
Again, appreciate the work.
Yep.
Okay. So that's where we are.
I have one question. Some of these institutions, like, for example, say here's Jobs Plus 5,000, is this nonprofit? Are they barred from using their membership fees for like political persuasion?
Who's this?
Like, say, Jobs Plus?
I, I don't, I don't know their, their bylaws off the top of my head, but I can, I can ask. I, I don't know.
Have you?
And what is political? I mean, that's a, I think that's a.
Well, there's a levy or they have an opinion. Well, there's a levy or they have an opinion on something or can't.
I don't think they're barred from that. The school, the school district is barred from participating in levies, but I don't think the Economic Development Organization is. And education is a critical part of economic development. You can't, you can't.
Would you just confirm that they're not then? So it sounds like, it sounds like they're not then. Sounds like they're not barred then.
I believe they're not barred from participating in things like economic development-related policy and lobby. I don't think they are, but I can check.
Appreciate the check.
Anything else? No. Actually, I'd like to take about a 10-minute break if we could. And I see people are running in and out and...
But Chair, before, I think institution, I think we're on to the consent agenda?
Right, and I'd like to take a 10-minute break now.
Well, during that break, I was hoping I could hand out some meeting minutes, I was hoping people could.
We have, I think the Chair will address that, but our goal is not to hand things out at meetings and ask people to action, take action.
My goal is to have accurate minutes and that should be every board's motivation.
It's a, it's a...
So some of the minutes are inaccurate and I'm trying to...
I think we'll address that when we come back.
Do you have permission to hand this out?
No.
So this is a fellow trustee, you're trying to silence, sir?
No, I'm not trying to silence you, there's, there's a process for...
Sir, I'm trying to provide input to the minutes that are before the board.
Hold on, hold on. Who's talking to who? Greg, are you addressing the Chair? Because if the President's talking to you and you're addressing the Chair, then we're out of order all the way around.
I should be addressing the Chair.
Mike should be responding to the other fellow trustee.
I understand from what you're, what you, that you want to make some changes to the minutes?
Yes, yes, I see some of them, there's some inaccuracies. For example, like the October 25th, well, we can talk about it like when it's not on the consent agenda, just... But like, for example, just things like reconvene the meeting for the October 25th. We never had an executive session before. So that, that gives the impression that there was an executive session before. Among other discussions that were important and motions that were missed related to November and December, like literally motions where votes were taken and vote counts and just completely missed. So there's a couple of issues. I'd like to hand these out and people can look them over.
All trustees have the ability to go in and say that when we have a consent agreement or a consent agenda to look at changing the...
Okay, we'll address it then, sir.
All right.
Recession?
Recession, let's see, what time is it? It's 8:36, we'll come back at 8:46. Get going again?
But I think we do have, we do have to hold the line on, you can't just substitute your unit and ask us to approve those.
No, he wants to make comments and he can do that.
Right.
But you cannot do the process you use. That doesn't work.
Right.
Okay. Okay, looks like we're, people are coming back this direction, we need to get started. I'll give them one minute and then we'll go ahead and start.
And what's our queue tonight?
Do we have all the trustees?
I think we're good.
At 8:50, we'll go ahead and start. Okay, reconvening now. So we have to go to, or are going to go to the next section.
Chair, sorry, as you talk about the consent agenda, I was hoping to address some items.
Right, and go ahead and ask your questions, et cetera, and make your statement.
Well, I was just hoping to pull tab two, five, six, and eight off of the consent agenda.
And what, do you, do you want to postpone it?
I want three of those four. I was hoping to postpone and I have a motion. I would like those, of three of those four, that's five, six, and eight. I would like to postpone until the next meeting and adopt proposed minutes that I have here, we can look over. But I also have October 25th minutes that I was hoping to approve today that haven't been included in the board packets that were provided on Friday. And that's my goal for today, so.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to remove tabs two, five, six, and eight from the consent agenda. And then I have other follow-on motions.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second it for discussion.
Any discussion? No discussion?
Would you, sorry, Board Chair, would you repeat the tabs you want to?
Tab two, that's the, it's regular meetings.
No, that's okay, just give me the tab number.
Tab two, five, six, and eight.
Five, six, and eight.
And my goals are to approve tab two and to postpone five, six, and eight.
And when you say approve two, you have a substitute tab two that you want to?
Yes, I do.
Or is it just some minor amendments to what we have in our board book?
They're pretty minor amendments to what we have in the board book. And I actually have a proposed minutes for all but tab six, tab six.
Okay, so I don't think we can follow the process well.
Yeah, but, but just if we could pull those from the consent agenda and I'll have a follow-on.
Yes, go ahead and pull those from the consent agenda or have a vote on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we or are we not pulling tab two?
Yes, we are. That's part of my motion.
Okay.
So you want to pull two, five, and, five, six, and eight, right?
Yes, and then they're still on our agenda, so we can address them, but there's discussion on them allowed.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so if I'm understanding...
What I want, what I want...
I'm sorry, Mr.
Is the word postpone. Which ones do you want to postpone until next time?
I have a motion to post, okay, five, six, and eight is what I'm interested in postponing. And I'm happy to rephrase my motion.
Please do that and let's do it in pieces. Because they're doing a lot of here and there'll be some issues, so we need to resolve those as we go along.
Okay, if you remove your second, then I think we both remove our second, so.
I'll remove my second.
Thank you, sir.
Withdraw my second.
I make a motion to postpone tabs five, six, and eight.
No, you mean postpone?
Until the next meeting. And then I have... And then I have, I have another motion to adopt October 25th, and I have amended minutes for that, so. But that's, one motion is just a tab six, seven, and eight is to postpone.
Wait a minute, five, six, and eight, right?
Five, six, and eight.
Five, six, and eight.
Okay.
Five, six, and eight.
Any discussion?
Okay, I will second that motion to.
Right, sorry.
Post, that's right. I will second the motion to postpone tabs five, six, and eight.
Thank you, sir.
Now, let's go through this very carefully and slowly. Okay, any discussion? And your, and your motion says we will consider them at the next meeting, and according to Robert's Rules of Order, postpone means we have to handle it next.
Yes, and I'm very prepared, I'm even prepared to handle it now, but it's not in the board packet, and it's nice to be considered of people to allow time to review that, and there's also additional minutes, things that I need to get from our board secretary, like, for example, the executive session roll call votes are not included in those minutes, and that's critically important, I think. If, I haven't checked if it's legally required, but I suspect it is, but I don't want to, so, that's my discussion justification. Thank you for recognizing.
Any further discussion? Okay.
One question. So you will provide us amended tabs five, six, and eight, and we will have those at least two weeks in advance of the next board meeting, so they can be included in the board package.
Yes, sir, absolute commitment.
And.
February meeting.
I, from a process standpoint, anything like this is ahead of time. What we need is red lines.
Yes.
Because we have the standard one, and then the process I'm expecting tonight for the rest of them is that you will allow the other trustees to see the red lines, see the differences, discuss it, and then we'll see what changes need to be made.
Absolutely.
Okay, but not replace the ones that are already done, just modify them.
I, I think, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's good, because that's, I think that's the process we need to do, and hopefully the, there aren't a lot, we'll see. Okay?
So there's a motion to postpone tab five, six, and eight until the next February board meeting.
Right, and there's, sounds like there's no further discussion, so, we need to vote. Ayes?
Aye.
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 Nays? No nays? Your motion is passed.
Thank you, sir. Now, can I make another motion? I have a proposed amended tab two, and the agenda item, yes, I have an amended minutes for October 25th, which in my mind is kind of critically important, because it's been numerous months since this meeting occurred, and I would like to hand that out. It's in red line format, so you can see the pretty minor changes that have occurred, and I think people, there was a whole discussion portion that pretty much was missed regarding the board policy subcommittee update, and I think it's important for a couple of reasons. I kind of wrote something down. But first that comes to mind is, it seems like NWCCU, they review the minutes, but they also haven't been critically like aware of all the board work that's gone on, and I feel like this does a little bit better documenting that also, if I could.
And from my own standpoint, I reviewed some of the minutes, and there's been a few things that are key that I think they'd be updated, but also I'd encourage that we do this quickly and not spend a lot of time. But we'll have to do what needs to be done.
Can I, can I hand this out, so that people?
Yeah, I think that's the only way to do it, in terms of change.
I, well, I think it's really important to read it into the record, whatever changes are being discussed, because nobody in the public has.
Right, yeah, we do plan on doing that. In other words, by reading it into the record, then everybody out here gets to know what the changes are. We're not trying to hide them, we're just trying to get them out, and so he's redlined them, and then he'll need to read whatever red lines that, in public, so that they can be read into, what they call read into the record. That's another thing we're doing. We're working on Robert's Rules of Order, and I've spent part of this afternoon learning more about that, and so we want to have continuous improvement of our Robert's Rules of, of our, our processes on the board. Okay, so what I'd like to do, I think, is, do you want to go through it line by line, or do you want people to read it and then comment?
I'm happy to just read it and comment, but.
Okay, you'll need to read it into the record. We've never done that before. Dr. Swain, you were on a board for 14 years. Were you familiar with that?
Yeah, any, any changes to a, to the minutes should be read in by the member, and that, so this is an appropriate time to say, I think this is incorrect, what is here, here's the way it should read, and then the, I think in each, if you take each section and then kind of agree that that's the way it should be or not, is probably going to be the most efficient way to do it.
Okay, and then by you reading it, and everybody here gets to know what's going on.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Appreciate your time in doing this.
Go ahead.
Would it be appropriate if we were allowed to take these home and review them ourselves, and come back at the next meeting and be prepared with comments?
That was the goal, by providing them on Friday, sir, but they were not distributed to the board as I requested. I appreciate.
If I may.
Go ahead.
I, I don't think that's a fair statement. I think they were provided with the direction to replace what was in the board packet with these, and that is not the process, that is not the proper process for making amendments to the minutes. Suzie is the clerk, she takes the minutes. It's very important that if, if there are changes, those were published, people had a chance to review them. If there's a change to that, the change need to be noted, and they were not submitted as red lines. They were submitted as, as regular unedited documents, so it would make it very hard for anybody who was reading it to know what changes took place and what didn't, and what was Suzie's version of the minutes, and what was your recommended changes. And so for that reason, we didn't include it, and Mike and I had a long discussion about what the right process was, and the right process is to identify, here's, here's what was the minutes as taken by the board clerk, here's the recommended changes to those, and you can approve or not approve all those recommended changes. So it might be, it might be better, rather than try to do it this way at tonight, is to allow the trustees to take this home and see the red line version, digest it themselves, go back and look at the video, and, and make it that way as opposed to trying to, because there are some pretty substantial changes. I mean, just for the, for the record, if you, so this is, that's not minor, in my opinion, and, and so that, that page three is pretty substantial changes. So I would recommend that the board members have the opportunity to review those and not be asked to receive a full page and then make a decision on that without the ability to go back and look at the video. It's my recommendation.
But to, for, for the public to know what's going on.
Well, if, if we.
We'd still have to read it.
Right, or we either have to read it, or we postpone this one as well, send it back, and let the trustees all go back and take a look at it, compare it with what they see on the tape, and then come back ready to approve or disapprove next, next meeting.
Right, but that, the next meeting scheduled now is February 28th.
I know.
And this is already the October ones.
I don't think there's a better way to do that. I think it's unfair to ask, as a, as a, as a board member of a school board, I would not, I would never approve this many changes, getting them at the meeting, or, or three days before the meeting, which is when the board packets went out. It's, it's not fair to the board members to, to give them this and ask them to approve it without the ability to go back and look at the videos, compare it to the previous version that Suzie put together, and then, and then make a sound decision. Because these, these become a legal record, and if it's wrong, or it includes stuff that should not be in here, it, it still becomes a legal record, and that can come back, and that creates risk. If we approve minutes kind of on the fly, it creates risk for the college. And so I would recommend, take, it's, it's better to do the right thing and take more time than to force this through tonight. And it may be fine, but I think the trustees need a chance to.
So what, what we've got here is a process issue.
Yep.
And we tried it a couple of ways, and that didn't work, so now what we want to do is make sure that they get it, get it, and we need to somehow read it into the record tonight.
We, I don't think we need to. As long as, if it's not going to be approved tonight, we can put it in the board packet, and the board packet, and then people can review it, and we approve it next time. But it would, it would require a different motion, because right now it has been, the motion was to withdraw, withdraw what was in the board packet and replace it with.
Part of it. It just, part of it has not.
I'd like to point out, board packets are completely optional, so.
I don't think so.
Yes.
So I, I just.
We've had this conversation many times.
And, and the record is pretty clear on who gets it right. Just saying.
So what, what do you think the effect?
Talk about our judiciary now, too, while we're at it.
Will be on.
I think the best thing to do is to, is to, just take this as a proposed amendment, postpone decision on tab two, take this, take these as.
What do you, what do you mean by who gets it right?
I, I'm not going to go into any more details.
Well, because the judiciary has never addressed anything open meeting.
You need to be, I need to be running the meeting.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, so, what was your question?
What was my question? My statement was, I guess, I think we, it'd even be worthwhile to ask our attorney, because we got training directly from the Idaho Attorney General, who enforces the Idaho open meeting laws, and he said, the attorney from Idaho AG's office themselves said that board packets are completely optional.
Well, and, but there are two issues there. One is what is minimally required legally. The other one is how, what we want to do from an objective standpoint to show everybody
More transparency is always the goal, is why I submitted them early.
Transparency is important. Okay, so if you still want to ask the attorney that question, go ahead. But the board still has the option of waiting, so that.
If.
More information is provided in a longer period of time, and the public can see it all.
I, I think I'm, I'm fine either way, if we want to postpone these minutes, but I am definitely against approving the minutes as they are. So if people want to approve these amended minutes, I would recommend that route, but we'll see how the votes come down on that. If people want to postpone it to February, then, then we, that is an option, all respect to the board's decision.
Okay, so I have one further question. There's a number of tabs here, right? There's eight, and you, we've already voted to postpone five, six, and eight.
We've not taken the vote, sir. Have we? I don't believe, have we?
Can anyone help us out?
Suzie, did we take the vote on it?
It was, it was a four, yeah, because trustee Zimmerman, thank you for voting.
But not on, but not for number two?
Yes, not for number two.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Of what, let me get, there's three groups here, I think, of numbers. One is number two, that's.
Okay, so we do, we may do a separate motion if we postpone number two, because it was not included in the.
I want to do three motions.
Okay.
We've done the first one, and we voted, okay? The second one, how many of these do you think are, you don't want to see modified?
Things that need modifying are tab two, which are still on the agenda.
Right.
Five, six, and eight need modification. So not modifying is tabs three, four, seven, and nine. Not modi, not modification is three, four, seven, and nine.
So we can.
Approve some.
Approve those tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion to approve tabs three, four, seven, and nine, and table tab two until the February 28th meeting.
Friendly amendment that you say postpone.
Postpone, postpone, okay.
So I.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
I, I would like to approve these minutes. I don't think it'd be showing good governance to NWCCU that we can't approve minutes after four, five months, but.
Well, the, the issue here is you, we're getting more intense scrutiny of the minutes. There are some issues there, and, and one process was tried, and now we're coming up with a better process going forward.
Yes, true.
So it's really showing that we have a process issue, and we're fixing it.
Sure, and maybe we can come back in February with a policy for handling minutes.
Maybe.
I think Robert's rules kind of addresses that.
Go ahead, Dr. Swain.
I, I think Robert's rules addresses that, and I think the process that we're, we're discussing now follows that process. And I know we use Robert's as a guide, but that's a reason, you never present somebody at a meeting with a document that, and then ask them to approve it that has.
Right.
Legal, legal implications.
Because it, as you pointed out, and I'm just rephrasing, paraphrasing what you were saying, these documents are important. We've discovered there's some issues. We need to fix them. We tried one process. It's not, that didn't work. It doesn't really meet our objectives of transparency. We're going to try another process. We're doing what we, we're passing what we can tonight, and then we'll handle the rest of it in February. Okay?
So if you could rephrase your motion, or I think I can recall it for you if you need help.
I move to approve tabs three, four, seven, and nine, and postpone tab two until the February 28th meeting.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second it? Okay, that's right. So, any further discussion? No? Vote ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
And do we have a vote?
He voted, I think.
I, I said aye.
Aye, so we have four ayes, one nay. Motion passes.
Suzie, did you get that vote? Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of that. Then let's go down to new business. We were unable to get into executive session. However, we have a challenge regarding the Swain records request. The attorneys require direction, so I have a proposed motion here, or I need a motion. Basically, just to recap, we attempted to enter executive session to hear recommendations for panel counsel. Remember, I have, I have the authority to do certain things, but I don't have the authority to do other things. So now the attorneys need, need direction, but those are, are personnel issues, et cetera, that are confidential, so we can't address them in public. So we have to do something. So we wanted to hear recommendations from panel counsel regarding their strategy for amicable and swift resolution to avoid further motion practice and increased costs, but since we weren't able to get the two-thirds vote, we need a vote, a motion to direct panel counsel to continue to defend the public records lawsuit filed by President Swain. Okay, we have no real, no other alternative. So who would like to make that motion?
Repeat what, what is the actual motion, sir? You, part of it sounded like.
Motion to direct panel counsel to continue to defend the public records lawsuit filed by President Swain.
So moved.
Second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Discussion?
Chair Wagner.
Yes, trustee.
Do you mean by continue to defend to file any motion to appeal?
It's open at this time?
Chair Wagner, I offer us to go into executive session. It's possibly an idea.
I don't, Mr. Chair, panel counsel's not here, so unfortunately.
So unfortunately, going into executive session does not serve the result we were trying to achieve earlier. And one more thing I'll say, I think your motion, I understand it, and I don't know if this answers trustee Zimmerman's question, I think I know where she was headed, but basically it authorizes the attorneys to do their job, defend the litigation in the case, and use their best judgment. Pretty much that's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Chair, I think that's inadequate information. It's not an answer to my question either.
Well, it's too bad you didn't vote to go into executive session.
You know, Todd, you are what you are.
Terry, I do know, you did not vote for it.
Terry has the floor. You said your question was not answered.
Yeah, I asked the question, does panel, do you intend as the board chair to move forward and appeal the decision that was handed down last Wednesday?
The, that would be up to.
Chair, I think.
Okay, I'm getting some information here, so would you like to comment?
Sure.
Into your mic.
Trustee Zimmerman, the resolution that we're operating under does not allow the chair to initiate litigation or settle litigation. But the next phase of the case will likely be a motion for costs and fees. The college will need to respond to that. And panel counsel needs the client to indicate the direction it would like to go. And so I believe they're already authorized to file responsive pleadings, because they're not initiating that. It doesn't include an appeal, because that's not really on the table yet. I mean, potentially it is, but the next phase is related to costs and attorney's fees. So we would expect the attorney to file a motion for that, and then our panel counsel would need to respond. Otherwise, they miss their 14-day deadline and we default. And so they need to hear from the board what the board wants to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Whose cost and whose attorney's fees?
This is President Swain's, related to the public records request lawsuit.
I do believe this is no shrugging matter, so.
This is what?
No shrugging matter. So this is taxpayer dollars we're talking for.
If the board would like to give, if the board would like to give panel counsel direction, they can. They can authorize panel counsel to reach out to Ms. Malick and attempt a resolution to avoid further motion practice. They could authorize counsel to wait and respond. They could authorize a motion to reconsider. They could authorize an appeal. So it's up to the board to direct panel counsel accordingly. And what I would recommend is to take the most cost-effective and prudent route and to authorize panel counsel to reach out to Ms. Malick and see if there is an amicable resolution that could be reached.
But to do that, we need a motion to let them do that.
One that could potentially reduce costs, both for Ms. Malick and the school.
So do we have a motion?
I believe I so moved it, that was, this is all discussion. Trustee Banducci seconded it.
Right. So any further discussion? None noted. We'll go ahead and vote. Do we need, I think we'll do a roll call vote for this. I think that's important. Trustee Corkill?
No.
Trustee Zimmerman?
No.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have to move ahead. Okay. So that motion passes. There is nothing or an action for executive session discussion regarding college response to the investigation report. Board policy status update. Do you have anything on that?
Well, so this is where the, if you look at the, at tab 10, it gives us the opportunity to review the, what we call the stoplight.
Yes.
To show everyone, there was some concern by NWCCU. They were, this was in the report that went forward, but they had not, they weren't aware or maybe didn't know what it meant. But this indicates a, so everybody knows what we're talking about. This indicates the status of all of the board policies that have been reviewed and approved, or reviewed, updated, and approved. And so we are now down to the one on recurring reports. And there's, I guess, the one on civil, which is a resolution now on civility. And so just to let everyone know that we are, we have reviewed and updated, or reviewed and approved, all of the board policies. And then that leads into the next discussion, which is on tabs 11 and 12. The final policies. Tab 11 is the resolution on civility, and tab 12 is the recurring reports.
Okay, so we need, Mike, I wrote this based on somebody else's sample, right? And we can, I would, we could strike, as they said in the public comment, the word political, I'm not trying to be partisan there, but we need a list of things that we can measure against and encourage people to be civil. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a first reading, correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
That's right, okay.
So we really don't have input. We just want people to take a look at it.
That's why I was asking, so.
Right, yeah.
But go ahead, anybody can make suggestions, certainly now. I didn't mean to stop you from doing that, I just wanted to clarify. So we can give inputs tonight, but we also have the opportunity, as we chew on this a little further, we can continue to give inputs as we move towards the next board reading, board meeting in the second reading.
Right. And the input I would have is, maybe there's a better word, just to say, just to say, build a civil community instead of a civil political community, because there's no intent there to make this political or be about politics at all. So I would ask that that be struck and we review it for when we review it again next week. Anybody else have any input? No input, then we don't need a motion.
Can I just phrase? I know it's a late night, but whereas we commit ourselves to build a civil community in which each person is respected and spirited, public and political debate is aimed at the betterment of North Idaho College and the Idaho Panhandle regardless of their political persuasion? Does that, does that even make sense, or is that getting too wordy?
That makes sense to me.
Because I think that's what it was trying to get to, a civil political community that people can, from the, you know, D and Rs can come together.
I would take out the word political.
Yep, that's what it did.
On both places.
That's what it did.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, take it out on, and political debate?
Right, and just say, and debate.
Yeah, and, yeah, spirited public debate.
Right.
And then do we want to end it regardless of political persuasion?
Sure.
I have it written down, I'll get with Suzie afterwards and make sure it's reflected.
Okay. Anything else? We just, that's it, it's first reading. So let's go to the next one, which is recurring reports. It's a different direction than what we did before. Just to read it through here, since folks in the audience don't have it, it basically says, board committee met and discussed a trustee solution for a policy on memberships, and it has been changed, so I'll just read the purpose of it. In order to facilitate and codify an ongoing flow of information to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees, informational reports will be given on a recurring basis to the trustees during the regularly scheduled meetings of the board. Report topics will rotate throughout the year as outlined in procedure 2.0115 to align with the multiple timing factors, state deadlines and all, you know, the end of a subscription handle changes and all of that. And trustee interests, areas, and worries. And I think that's what we just did.
I think.
The first cut.
Chair, if I could have input?
Right, go ahead.
I think if procedure 20115 is going to change, that it should come before the board again. That it just can't change willy-nilly, that if people want to add or take off from it, that it should come before the board.
Well, one of the reasons why, if I may.
Go ahead.
One of the reasons why we put it as a procedure is just because of that, is this is the first year going through it, we find out that things that we had scheduled or things that just don't make sense. And so it's not a, or don't make sense at the time or frequency that we put them forward. And so these are, these are all things that will be happening, but you see, they're not on a schedule, so they're, so I think if we, and there may be things that we want to add to that. And so as we go through and figure that out, this first year, I would just say, maybe a draft, and so coming back before the board might be fine. I don't have any issues with that, but we're really trying to formalize some of these things and codify them and create history so you can track change over time as well. So I think that's fine.
Having the procedure come before the board, you're saying?
Yeah, that's fine.
And for the benefit of the audience, the procedure they're talking about, I'll read a little bit about it so you understand what they're talking about. Purpose of the procedure is to facilitate an ongoing flow of information to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees through informational reports given on a recurring basis to the trustees during the regularly scheduled meetings of the board. And then the second portion of it is report topics and frequency. And it says, the president and designees will make informational presentations to the trustees on the informational topics in a schedule that distributes the reports throughout the academic year as appropriate and in alignment with other scheduling factors like when the information is available and when it means something in terms of grant renewals and enrollment cycles and all of that. And trustee interest areas again. And then there's listed here, and I won't go through all this, twice yearly examples, annual examples, like area agency on agent, Center for New Directions, Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and those kinds of things. Okay, so what we're, what we're attempting to do is get this information to the board so the board is aware of what's going on.
And these should be in the board packet, so people should have access to them, the full list, yeah.
But just in case they don't, this is what's there, okay? So any further comments on the procedure or the policy?
Well, I think we.
This is the first reading.
I think we agreed that inputs are going to happen regarding the procedure coming before the board for approval.
Are you making any tonight, though?
No, I'm going to assume the board secretary and the president have heard that comment. We'll document it in the minutes, and next reading, it'll reflect that. I don't think we need a wordsmith wording.
That's correct.
Okay. And remarks for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing that I'd like to make clear.
Okay.
And that regards to a gunsmithing school. And that was entirely Dwight Van Horn's idea. He called me, I put him in touch with Dr. Swain, I think that was about a month ago. And March 1st, we have a gunsmithing school, so.
That's fast.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's great.
And Dwight is a member of the NRA Board of Directors, and he will be immense help throughout this.
That's, it was really Colby Metelli that did the work on it, then.
Any other remarks for the good of the order? With that, adjourned.